Okay, good morning once again. We'll call the Board Supervisors October 17th meeting back into session after a brief recess. And with that, if you could call a roll very quickly, Flo, just reestablish a quorum please.
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to our 10 o'clock item, please.
Okay, item 46, Consider Stop Sign Installation on Clay Station Road at Taverner Road Intersection.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Ms. Rodriguez.
Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Lupi Rodriguez with the Transportation Department, and today we're here for the Board to consider the installation of stop signs at the intersection of Taverner and Clay Station Road. To give a little history or background on this, the intersections in the southeast section of the county and more so in the Wilton community, this area is mainly rural in nature with no curb gutter and sidewalk. Clay Station Road is a 55 mile per hour street with center line which actually connects Dillard Road to Twin Cities Road in that area. Taverner Road is the minor street of the two at this intersection which is controlled by side stops as he approaches to Clay Station. So the intersection was evaluated for always stop control based on the standard engineering warrants based in the California Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. According to the state standards, installation of the always stop control should be based on traffic study to determine minimum traffic volume and safety criteria and whether the safety criteria and minimum traffic volumes are met. To meet the always stop warrants, the intersection for the main street needs to have a minimum of 210 vehicles per hour for a minimum of eight hours. And the side streets or the minor road would need to have 140 vehicles per hour for the same eight hours. The always stop traffic criteria requirement, a minimum of five correctable accidents at this intersection, correctable by always stop. This intersection has had five in five years actually, with actually in about seven years ago in 2010, we did have a fatal collision at that intersection. So the, at this point, the intersection does not meet the always stop warrants, but there's other considerations that the Board can consider in determining. We have had public interest in the community for a number of years at this location requesting that, and so although it doesn't meet the technical requirements for the always stop, the Board is asked to consider the installation of the always stop at the intersection.
Okay. Well, thank you Lupi for the presentation. I think the written staff report certainly cited some of the considerations and information that was gathered in order to bring this to the Board. And I appreciate the Department of Transportation bringing it forward. I know I've had some conversations certainly over many years with our staff at this and other locations in the county. And we did receive a letter, and I'm going to ask the clerk to read that into record in just a moment, but would just note that recently had some additional communication. Certainly, I don't know that there's unanimous opinion reflected in the community, which that would be very unique, but I do think there is some general concern. And as Mr. Rodriguez pointed out, the intersection has had some accidents there. I think one of the factors that, at least in my consideration of this matter, is that the speeds on Clay Station, which is the uncontrolled movement north and south, and with the buildout of the ranch, we added a couple of hundred homes in the area. Certainly with the former nuclear plant at Rancho Cycle Park, and I think with the connectivity between some of the foothill communities and then obviously people moving to the Oak Grove area and other areas on a daily or regular basis, we see traffic that may fluctuate from hour to hour, from day to day potentially, but nonetheless, there are some site considerations as well. I think you certainly can see well at the intersection, but you do come off of a bit of a grade on the south as you approach going northbound on Clay Station. There were some trees and some other growth there and a little bit of topography, and all those things considered, I am certainly willing to hear from folks here this morning. But at least in my view, this is an intersection would warrant the installation of a four-way stop. And I think the accidents that could possibly occur even with a four-way stop would be certainly less severe in most cases because you would stop all of the legs of the intersection versus just two. And then if somebody does get in that intersection and somebody's coming in from a different direction at a pretty high rate of speed, it involves a much more serious accident at times. So I don't know if any of my colleagues had any questions, and I don't have anybody sign to speak, so I would just say if anybody wishes to address the Board on item 46 on this stop sign request, I'd invite you to get a speaker form in. If not, I'd just ask that Flo, you read the letter into the record. It should be just a couple of minutes. And then Lupi, if you'll stand by just for a moment, and we'll bring it back to the Board. Flo?
Okay. So this email is submitted as input in the consideration for the installation of stop signs on Clay Station Road at the intersection of Taverner Road. And this comes from Franklin Kossick. "My name is Franklin Kossick and I live in the Ranch Equestrian Estates Community, which is near the intersection in question. I have read the SACD draft staff report regarding the addition of stop signs on both directions on Clay Station Road and disagree with their findings that always stop signs are not needed. I believe they need to be installed to prevent any further collisions at this intersection. The SACD report regarding this issue indicates that there have been five reported collisions during the five-year period between 2012 and 16. I find it interesting that SACD fails to list the fact that one of those collisions resulted in a fatality. A young girl was killed when she failed to stop at the sign while heading southwest on Taverner and collided with a pickup truck traveling northwest on Clay Station. The family of the deceased young lady has erected a makeshift memorial at the intersection to memorialize her death there. I have attached a photo of the memorial. There is another contributing factor that plays into the situation with regards to visibility and safety. There is a long solid line of mature redwood trees on private property in the yard of 9045 Taverner Road. Those trees block the view of drivers traveling northwest on Clay Station and prevent them from seeing vehicles approaching the intersection from the right. This almost makes it a blind intersection for traffic on Clay Station. It would be ideal if the trees weren't there, but they are, and I don't think the county could make the owner remove them. I have attached another photo of the trees in relation to the intersection."
If I just could, that this photo is taking the person standing south of the intersection, I believe, and looking northward, and this is the east side of the road if I'm not mistaken, so of Clay Station. Okay, thanks.
It is quite apparent to me that most of the collisions at this location are caused by errant drivers who fail to see the stop signs on Taverner and collide with vehicles traveling at least 55 miles per hour on Clay Station. This results in major collisions and not just property damage, quote, "fender benders." The stop sign on Clay Station would allow for drivers to stop and look both ways before crossing Taverner. I find it interesting that SACD claims to have counted the number of vehicles that pass through the intersection and have come to the conclusion that the amount of traffic does not warrant always stop signs. I travel through this intersection almost daily, and I can only assume that SACD utilized a mechanical device to count the vehicles utilizing the intersection. I have never seen a traffic counting device on the road at any time, and being a retired law enforcement officer, I noticed such things. I feel that the intersection warrants always traffic control in the form of stop signs. It is a mere pittance in the scheme of things to spend the $1,000 to install the stop signs. The always stop signs at this intersection could very well prevent any future collisions, and I just may save a life. I am requesting that the Board notify me of the final decision."
Okay, thank you Flo. Okay, do you have any other correspondents or speakers? And I do have a member of the Board, Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I note that in the Board letter, there's no mention of, but please correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's any mention of other measures besides an always stop that might be used to caution drivers, and I'm not even sure there is such a thing, but something that warns drivers well ahead of time, especially if there's some visual obstruction like a row of trees, beware of cross-traffic ahead, something to that effect.
Flashing yellow light.
Yeah, when we did a review of the accidents, we noticed that the person coming from the side streets were the ones not yielding for some reason to the stop sign. And so what we have in place at this point is we have stop-ahead signs. We have stop-ahead legends at that location also to advise the motorists coming up to the stop, existing stop, that there is a stop there. And then more recently also, we installed an additional sign that says cross-traffic does not stop. And so we tried to build, as we come along, to try to figure out how the best way to notice folks coming up to the intersection that the stop is there.
And these are all black text on yellow field kind of signs, cautionary signs?
The cautionary signs are the yellow signs, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, good question. Excuse me. The recent addition of the signs, I think, certainly is noticeable. I know I've passed through the intersection a few times in recent weeks, and they're posted on both of the stop approaches for the Taverner Road east and west connection there. And I'm sure that those provide an alert, and I know we did have a comment from another party on this, and they felt that that, you know, was a warranted addition. So I don't have any other questions then, or members? If not, thank you Lupi. And this is one of those where I think that over the years, we've attempted to do a number of things, and I appreciate the interest certainly of my colleagues in asking about other measures. Certainly, you can install flashers and such, but then those have to either be on a solar battery of some sort, or, and I think that the stop sign doesn't assure that people are going to stop at that location, but I think it would slow the speeds down with the advance warning and so forth. And so I'm prepared to, I think with the community concerns, but also I think some of the circumstances that surround this intersection to move that we approve the placement of stop signs, a four-way stop at this location. So that would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, but nothing further than, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you Lupi, thanks.
Okay, for item 47, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. Adopt Recycled Water Feasibility Study.
Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Mike Grinstad with the Sacramento County Water Agency.
Mike, maybe if you could just pull the speakers in a little closer and kind of stand between them.
Raise the podium maybe a little.
Sure.
How's that?
Want to raise the podium, just a little? Want to raise the podium just a little? You can raise the, there's a button right here.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I was waiting for the.
You'll get used to it, Mike. You're going to be a pro at it before you're done, so.
Ah, there we go. Yeah, it's good. Thank you very much. Well, good morning again, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Mike Grinstad with the Sacramento County Water Agency. And today, I am here to present to you the Recycled Water Feasibility Study. So that's the first thing we're going to do, and the way I'd like to do that is to first give you an overview of the study area and of conjunctive use. Tell you a little bit about the purpose of the study, tell you a little bit about the approach that we used for the study. We'll describe the proposed benefits of the project, as there's a proposed project in the study. And then the second thing I'd like to do is to gain your approval of the resolution approving the recycled water policy for the Sacramento County Water Agency that is recommended by the study. So SCWA serves multiple areas, but this study really covers Zone 40 as the study area. And you can see the outline of Zone 40 here in the map to the right of the writing. The reason why we chose Zone 40 as the study area is due to its proximity to the regional sand facilities. There's already a conjunctive use program in Zone 40. Surface water is delivered, groundwater is delivered, and there's already an amount of recycled water delivered, although it's a small amount. So the purpose behind this study is to evaluate the feasibility of expanding the use of recycled water in Zone 40. This would help with the water supply portfolio in Zone 40 and with our conjunctive use mission in Zone 40. This is really a good time, we believe, to evaluate the recycled water direction. Regional Sand right now is increasing the recycled water supply through their large echo water project. There's been, the recent drought has highlighted the importance of a diversified water supply portfolio. There's a State of California goal to increase recycled water use. There's also an increased emphasis on indirect and direct potable reuse in California. Regulations are being developed right now for direct potable reuse, and projects are being implemented in the direct potable reuse kind of arena. Also, this is with the advent of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, there's an unknown effect on our groundwater supply. So we have an approach behind this study. We have a purpose, and now here's the approach. Here's what we use to study recycled water and the feasibility in Zone 40. This is kind of really an outline of the report itself. First, there's an overview of the Zone 40 setting and the water supply portfolio. The report then describes the problems and the needs in Zone 40. It describes the recycled water supply, that's really regional sand supply, and the amount of wastewater that they're producing. It evaluates multiple alternatives. And then the real meat and potatoes of the study is it takes those multiple alternatives, looks at the cost and the benefit of each, and selects a hybrid project. And our hybrid project is kind of a five-pronged approach here. The first prong of which, and I'll go through each one of these just in the list, but the presentation has a little bit more in-depth on each one. And if anyone has any questions, ask at any time. So the South County Agriculture and Habitat Lands Recycled Water Program, the South County Ag Program, is one prong of this hybrid project. We continue with the existing system as another prong. There's an expansion of the recycled water system. There's also the in-the-river swap portion of this hybrid option, and then finally, the direct potable reuse piece. So the first thing that we'll talk about is the South County Ag Project. This is really regional sands project. Regional sand is moving forward with the South County Ag Program. And we realize that there's a lot of regional benefit for this program, but we're not, we're going to track it and participate as appropriate as benefits become evident and apparent in the Zone 40 region itself.
Mike, if I could ask you just on that point, since you invited questions along the way here.
Okay, for item 47, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. Adopt recycled water feasibility study.
Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Mike Grinstead with the Sacramento County Water Agency.
Mike, maybe if you could just pull the speakers in a little closer, kind of stand between them.
Raise the podium maybe a little.
Sure. Want to raise the podium just a hair? You can raise the, there's a button right here.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I was waiting for that.
You'll get used to this, Mike, you're going to be a pro at it before you're done, so.
Ah, there we go. Yeah, it's good. Thank you very much. Well, good morning again, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Mike Grinstead with the Sacramento County Water Agency, and today I am here to present to you the recycled water feasibility study. So that's the first thing we're going to do, and the way I'd like to do that is to first give you an overview of the study area and of conjunctive use. Tell you a little bit about the purpose of the study, tell you a little bit about the approach that we used for the study. We'll describe the proposed benefits of the project, as there's a proposed project in the study. And then the second thing I'd like to do is to gain your approval of the resolution approving the recycled water policy for the Sacramento County Water Agency that is recommended by the study. So SCWA serves multiple areas, but this study really covers Zone 40 as the study area. And you can see the outline of Zone 40 here in the map to the right of the writing. The reason why we chose Zone 40 as the study area is due to its proximity to the Regional Sand facilities. There's already a conjunctive use program in Zone 40. Surface water is delivered, groundwater is delivered, and there's already an amount of recycled water delivered, although it's a small amount. So the purpose behind this study is to evaluate the feasibility of expanding the use of recycled water in Zone 40. This would help with the water supply portfolio in Zone 40 and with our conjunctive use mission in Zone 40. This is really a good time, we believe, to evaluate the recycled water direction. Regional Sand right now is increasing the recycled water supply through their Large Echo Water Project. There's been, the recent drought has highlighted the importance of a diversified water supply portfolio. There's a State of California goal to increase recycled water use. There's also an increased emphasis on indirect and direct potable reuse in California. Regulations are being developed right now for direct potable reuse, and projects are being implemented in the direct potable reuse kind of arena. Also, this is the, with the advent of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, there's an unknown effect on our groundwater supply. So we have an approach behind this study. We have a purpose, and now here's the approach. Here's what we use to study recycled water and the feasibility in Zone 40. This is kind of really an outline of the report itself. First, there's an overview of the Zone 40 setting and the water supply portfolio. The report then describes the problems and the needs in Zone 40. It describes the recycled water supply, that's really Regional Sand's supply, and the amount of wastewater that they're producing. It evaluates multiple alternatives. And then the real meat and potatoes of the study is it takes those multiple alternatives, looks at the cost and the benefit of each, and selects a hybrid project. And our hybrid project is kind of a five-pronged approach here. The first prong of which, and I'll go through each one of these just in the list, but the presentation has a little bit more in-depth on each one, and if anyone has any questions, ask at any time. So the South County Agriculture and Habitat Lands Recycled Water Program, the South County Ag Program, is one prong of this hybrid project. We continue with the existing system as another prong. There's an expansion of the recycled water system. There's also the in-the-river swap portion of this hybrid option, and then finally the direct potable reuse piece. So the first thing that we'll talk about is the South County Ag Project. This is really Regional Sand's project. Regional Sand is moving forward with the South County Ag Program, and we realize that there's a lot of regional benefit for this program, but we're not, we're going to track it and participate as appropriate as benefits become evident and apparent in the Zone 40 region itself.
Mike, if I could ask you just on that point, since you said invited questions along the way here.
Yes, sir.
And I know you're going to give a summary when you're done with this, but it seems to me that with your second bullet there, that, and it's not inappropriate that you would track and participate, but it, you know, and I heard you say that, well, as the benefits become better defined and so forth. When I look at this in its totality, it seems to me that we ought to be a really strong partner in that process, and again, recognizing that they've taken the lead, they're seeking grant monies, they're doing outreach to landers and so forth. But if we're truly committed to it, I guess I see, I would want to see the water agency paired much more closely with the Regional Sanitation Agency in that effort. And again, it may not be an area where we're delivering water, but it is certainly in the unincorporated area of the county, and it's an area where if you can get the benefits that I think are, you know, basically expected of this, that we would, you know, benefit as a county. And so I just, I guess I found this recommendation a bit weak, very frankly, and I don't say that critically, but I say it when I, I think we ought to be a much stronger partner in that effort, whether they take the lead on it or not, but just to track it, and, well, we'll participate when, you know, occasion calls for it. That seems to me to fall a bit short. We need to be more engaged, encouraging, participatory. That's my view of it. And so I look at you, Mike, maybe Michael Peterson or.
Yeah, Supervisor Serna, totally. The, I mean, I think the description in the presentation may understate it. We've been engaged with the Regional Sanitation District in the project, and this has been a two-way path of communication and collaboration, and we're going to continue to do that. That aside, we, the intent really is, in our feasibility study, is to look, in addition to that, what other opportunities are there? So it's not to diminish at all the South County Ag Project, but to ensure that we're exploring other opportunities beyond that or in conjunction with that. But again, we have continued to be committed to working with Regional Sand on the South County Ag Project. And as it does move forward, as we can define, as we can further define and refine the benefits to Zone 40 as a purveyor, and obviously generally to the region as well, we're going to continue to engage. So it is certainly not meant to diminish the importance or our role, our participation with Regional Sanitation in that project.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so we'll continue on to the next prong of our approach, which is continuing with the existing system. And here, to the right of the writing again, you'll see a map, and Highway 99 is here so that we can all kind of be oriented to the map in a way. And we're going to continue recycled water delivery to the Phase 1 area. And the Phase 1 area is the pink area, but I'll go ahead and circle around that in the map. Right there, recycled water is currently being delivered. In the Phase 2 area, this area is in progress, so we're continuing to make progress toward delivering recycled water in that area, and we want to be sure that these two projects And the next prong in our approach is to expand that system. So we've chosen the limited expansion approach. And what we mean by limited expansion is if you'll look again at this map, there's a dotted blue line that goes around the outside, and that's a really planning-level theoretical area where the benefit and the cost of recycled water to get it to those areas might actually work out. This is, to deliver recycled water is a costly infrastructure or problem, right? The further away you get from where the recycled water is produced, the more pumps and pipelines it takes to get the water there. So this is an area where the cost and the benefit could work out. As customers and funding arise, this is where we would look to expand recycled water. And you'll see in this graphic as well, a red dotted line. These are theoretical transmission mains to deliver recycled water for approved uses, and these were used to put kind of a planning-level cost estimate together so that we could compare the benefits versus the costs. The next prong in the approach is what we call the in-the-river swap. And this is kind of a, it's an out-of-the-box concept, where we would divert water at the Freeport Regional Water Authority intake in exchange for water that is discharged one mile downstream to the Sacramento River from the Regional Sand wastewater facilities. This is an exciting opportunity for us because we could use existing infrastructure to take advantage of recycled water, but it does require initiating a permit process. So we would go to the State Water Resources Control Board for approval, and this again requires very close coordination with Regional Sand as the discharge that is placed into the river is really theirs. And the final prong in our approach here is direct potable reuse. So Regional Sand is going to produce through the Echo Water Project Title 22 tertiary treated recycled water. Now that water would then be treated to an even higher level, and then that water could be available to be able to supply to the Vineyard Surface Water Treatment Plant. Now, this is something that we've talked about before, that regulations are still in development for this. We just want to leave it on the table. We're going to consider it at a later time. But if you look at the graphic here, you'll see two different pipe alignments. One that comes out of the Regional Sand facilities and enters into the Freeport Pipeline, and another that is parallel and would provide a completely separate water source that would go to the Vineyard Surface Water Treatment Plant. So with this hybrid project, with these five-pronged, this five-pronged approach, there are quite a few benefits that I'd like to talk about. I mean, one thing that we all need to realize is recycled water is an important regional resource. Regional Sand is producing this resource, and our project puts the resource to a beneficial use. This would increase the diversity of the water supply portfolio in Zone 40. Two of the pieces, the continued use and limited expansion of the current recycled water system, have some kind of specific benefits for those two pieces. They allow irrigation with recycled water, there's no additional treatment needed, and this reduces the demand on groundwater and surface water supplies both. In the two prongs of the approach, the river swap and the direct potable reuse, the benefits there are that Regional Sand produces recycled water independent of drought. They produce it all the time. There's less risk of curtailment of this resource than there is with the current surface water rights, which would mean that we could realize more benefit of the Vineyard Surface Water Treatment Plant in dry years, and we'd have less dependence on groundwater. So considering those benefits, what we'd like to do today is ask you, the board, to approve the resolution containing the following recycled water policy. We'll continue with the current Phase 1 and Phase 2 recycled water delivery, expand the existing system on a limited basis as customers and funding are secured, implement the in-the-river swap option, and begin working with Regional Sand and the State Water Resources Control Board to obtain permits, explore direct potable reuse when regulations are finalized to allow implementation in California, and finally, track the South County Agricultural Program and participate as appropriate if there is an overall benefit to SCWA.
Okay, thanks, Michael. Could I maybe go back to slide eight for a moment?
Sure. Which slide was?
No, eight. Page eight.
Yes.
Keep going, right there. In light of the recommendations and the resolution we're asking us, again, it's pretty soft in some areas, and recognize, obviously, there's some cost to be ascertained, but when you look at this service area, the opportunities for parks and school playgrounds, landscape medians, and even some developing areas, I guess I don't find it sufficient in the resolutions to say, you know, continue to explore, we funding opportunities, and if we find the money, and if we find people that are willing to do it. I think we need to be, and we need to have a full discussion before this board about that if we want to. One, we've got the Phase 2, which we are, there's some backbone transmission mains there, if I understand it correctly already, and as that builds out, working with the City of El Grove. But if we're ever going to do this, I think that it's going to be a bit of time before we get to any direct potable reuse. I know it's done in some communities and so forth, but I believe that we need to look at getting that water at least to some of the public areas, and I think having gone through the drought that we did, and you look at our service area here, that, you know, getting that across the freeway using Sheldon Road alternative here, but there's a lot of developments occurred over the last 25, 30 years that where we could have gotten the opportunities to leave, you know, those roads are pretty much in place, so obviously any project's going to have a disruptive impact and be more costly. But I think we need to look at this more precisely, and that just to pass a resolution says, well, because you look at what's happened over the last 30 years and the missed opportunities, if there were opportunities there, I would suggest that we need to look at this more seriously, and that, you know, otherwise, you're going to continue to see build out. You're not going to put in any backbone infrastructure, assuming that was appropriate, and that you, you know, that this board and certainly our water agency decided to do that. And so you do road expansions, and you do improvements along Bradshaw Road and some of the vineyard areas and North Vineyard Station. I just believe that we need to have a more thorough look at this, because if we just put this in a resolution, you know, go off, it's in the policy, you're going to do your jobs, and that's the direction, and, you know, if somebody comes along, or if we talk to, it needs a more concentrated, I believe, review and consideration. And again, we can look at, you know, you've got some of the costs associated with doing that and so forth, but talk about that, because otherwise, the next time a drought comes around, we'll be no more prepared in those public areas nor in people's yards than we were this go-round. And so I, development is pretty much fixed in a lot of these locations, but there are some opportunities, and I would just say that particularly in that area east of 99, and to some degree on the west side, and most of that's in the City of El Grove, that there are some opportunities there that we ought to look at, and look at what sort of infrastructure would be required, at least get some transmission capacity in there, and then talk with some of our public agency partners. And so I would like us, again, unless there's some urgency to this, I would just suggest as my comments this morning, that we have a chance to have some additional discussion. We've got a very full agenda today. It's important that you've teed this up for the board this morning, and I want to hear from my colleagues, anybody in the audience, but I think this could use a little more time and actually come back and talk about that alternative before we embody it in a resolution, just send you off and say, you know, this is good enough for today, because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not there yet on that, on this particular aspect of it, so.
Supervisor Serna, we could certainly come back and, you know, discuss in more detail the costs and the logistics and the timeframe that would go into that, expanding the system. And I think that's, that's the logical next step, that the intent is not that, well, here we brought this to the board, and now we can, you know, ignore four of them and do one of the five. The next step would be just that, to, okay, let's define what's the perimeter, what would the cost be, and how would that be financed? Because we know it would have to be financed along with development. So that is the next logical step, and that's assuming that this, that today's item is approved, is to continue that. I mean, that is, that's the intent, so.
So in other words, is that an implementation plan by another?
Correct.
When would that come back to us?
I don't know, probably, I think we would probably be within, I'd say, within four to six months, something like that. But we would, we need to huddle back and schedule that out, but that would be the next step in terms of expanding the, sort of the program that we have in place.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Supervisor, yes.
I agree with my colleague, and this is obviously affecting a good portion of the South County three supervisorial districts. But again, with the experience being very fresh in terms of the consequence of the drought, especially all the anecdotes that we heard across the county about tree loss and vegetation loss, I'm more eager to be aggressive on this than to accept some soft language. But if I'm hearing at the same time that the intent here is to work in steps, and that the next one is going to be an implementation plan that spells out exactly, or more precisely, cost, schedule, how we get there from here as a theme, then I'm gratified that that's the case. But, you know, perhaps, perhaps this resolution needs to more clearly state that that is the case. Maybe that's the, what we're looking for this morning.
And we can, we can come back and, you know, tune up the resolution language as well to address the concerns that we're hearing.
Okay. Well, yeah, I think the resolution could, to the point here, that on item two, which was the one I drew attention to, but that we could direct that, you know, be back to us in six months with a outline for an implementation plan, discussion regarding financing, how we might, again, phase that approach to, again, all the considerations that go into that. Obviously, there's going to be a cost associated with doing that, but it's not going to get any cheaper as days go by or years go by, and we're going to lose opportunities, certainly in-road opportunities to construct potentially in the future. So to your point, Mr. Serna, and certainly we'll hear from others as well, but I think that if we modify the language there in number two and gave that direction as part of the resolution to be back to this board, you know, by first quarter, in the first quarter of 2018, and then schedule this for workshop and further discussion, I would be satisfied with that, so.
We'll incorporate that in.
Okay, all right, so then, yeah, unless there's any other comments, I had nobody, anybody in the public want to speak to this item? I know a lot of you're hearing the next item. All right, then I would bring it back to the board. I would then incorporate it as a motion with the direction in item two to have you come back in a workshop setting with a discussion and implementation plan by early 2018, so.
Second.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Thank you, Michael. All right, nothing else, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
You want to schedule a date, Mr. Gill?
Not yet. We'll come up with a date.
Okay, we're watching it.
I know you are.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Okay.
Okay, for your next item 48, City of Sacramento requests for services related to whole-person care pilot program.
All righty, certainly welcome all the folks in the audience, and we're going to get a staff report, and we'll have more questions. I know we have Mayor Steinberg here and others that will likely want to address this, and so we'll get to that here in a moment, but let's have Mr. Lake roll out the PowerPoint and take board questions, and then we'll get into meat of the hearing. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Paul Lake, Deputy County Executive for Social Services Agency. Last year, the county made, put out an offer for, or, excuse me, the state put out an offer for counties, giving them the opportunity to apply for what's called a whole-person care waiver pilot program. And this is a Medi-Cal waiver program to test local initiatives, has a number of goals around coordinating health, behavioral health, and social services for the benefit of certain target populations, including the homeless or people who may be at risk of homelessness. And the primary goals are to reduce hospital emergency room use, reduce inpatient utilization, improve overall health, and get these folks into housing. And one of the key aspects of it is we must be able to demonstrate that we've achieved those outcomes in order for the program to be successful. And I would also point out that it's a five-year, limited-term pilot program. When this opportunity came to the county's attention, we looked very closely at it to see if it was something that we as a county wanted to apply for. We asked ourselves how it would fit into our entire service system, what would it add to that service system, how would it complement all of our other efforts and programs, would there be any conflicts, or would it be detrimental to what we're working on? What would we gain by taking the money, and what would we lose by leaving the money on the table? Our conclusion is that, was that we would not apply for this program. We put a lot of effort into a number of new services, number of adding capacity to our mental health and substance abuse and homeless system, around housing, around behavioral health, substance abuse treatment, crisis services to divert people away from emergency rooms. We spent a lot of time recently with our hospital systems, working on solutions, and this board devoted a lot of funds to programs that are about ready to kick off, and some have already done that, and are proving successful in diverting people from emergency rooms. We've made a lot of progress in these areas. We're still developing more programs that are really going to have an impact on the system. We also noted that whole-person care does not pay for adding that capacity. It pays for things like navigation, it pays for case management, it pays for some housing referrals, but it doesn't add service capacity. And rather than chase money that adds more navigation, we wanted to continue focusing our efforts on getting and keeping the services that we're putting in place. In addition, there's some level of financial risk. If we don't achieve those outcomes, if we can't demonstrate them because we can't put the services in place or we can't get the data, then it would be a financial risk to the county. We would have to pay the funds back. So all the, we concluded that the better navigation and the various housing referrals really don't matter unless you can prove that you've made those impacts. So in the grand scheme, we decided that it was better to spend our efforts on our service strategies and not divert our course to chase money or risk existing programs that we might have to risk to pay back. we might have to risk to pay back the federal government. The City of Sacramento, on the other hand, decided they wanted to apply for this, and the state authorized them to do that, and the state awarded a program to them. And they have made the, the unique request to the county to help them implement their new social service program, and we've had some discussions with them on that. With the assistance from Hermosillo Azavito Strategic Communications, we've had, we talked to the city about their requests. One of those requests was to have the county be closely involved in the design and governance of their whole person care pilot. We opted not to be in the lead of this program for a reason. We opted not to apply for it for, for the reasons that I've stated. But in the course of the discussions we had with the assistance of Hermosillo Azavito, we did agree to have our department leadership meet with city staff to, to see what we could do to provide some assistance. So our city leaders, or we're going to meet with city leaders, assigning our staff in DHHS, Sandy Damiano, who's the Deputy Director for Primary Health, Uma Zikowski, our Deputy Director for Behavioral Health, and Cindy Kavanaugh, who's our Director of Homeless Initiatives. And they'll meet with the city leaders to talk about what we can do to provide some additional assistance, working closely with the city-county two by two in furthering that effort. The city also requested our assistance in helping them coordinate program planning, design and implementation. I want to make sure everybody understands that the board has adopted a very extensive plan. You've invested a lot of funds and a lot of effort in some major initiatives that we're progressing on implementing. And it's, and one of the things, once we get those in place, we acknowledge that it's going to be important that there's coordination at the field level. Our social workers and outreach workers, who are going to be identifying people who need some assistance, we want to make sure that the city's not also serving them so that we're at cross purposes or duplicating efforts. So we agreed we would sit down and work out protocols to make sure that that does not happen. The city made a number of requests regarding data sharing and assisting with coordination with providers. The city's asked at various points for access to Medi-Cal eligibility information, clinical information of people we serve, outcomes, and we, we've agreed to work with them on how that data sharing might work. It's important that we explore what their systems are, how they're protecting that data, and what the implications for HIPAA laws will be. We've also provided them some assistance on how to access the Medi-Cal eligibility information without the middle step of having to go through the county, and we will continue to, we will work with them on how to use, utilize the work we've done over the years with our GMAC providers through a committee that we currently have. The city also asked us to prioritize our behavioral health services for whole person care participants. And we've had a lot of discussion back and forth, and it's important that people know, and they, they now acknowledge that this is the case, that a lot of our services are funded by Medi-Cal. And we are prohibited by federal and state law for prioritizing one Medi-Cal beneficiary over another. It's basically first come, first served and where you're at relative to your need. And so we can't simply say we're going to take a subset of Medi-Cal beneficiaries and prioritize Medi-Cal programs for them. Likewise, some of our MHSA programs have certain target populations that we're beholden to. There are some programs that we could modify our target populations and reprioritize them. That would require a lot of analysis, and it would require a community process that's written into the MHSA law that we have to do outreach to the community and develop a plan and modify any plans. So we could take that approach and do that should the board so direct us. We also agreed to provide training and technical assistance, otherwise, on how the city can access our existing services, and we are proceeding with that. Much of this, much of the discussion in the last several weeks around the city's requests have revolved around the Mental Health Services Act budget. We've had meetings with city consultants, with city staff, elected representatives around this, and we provided information and responded to some of their questions and concerns, and frankly, some misperceptions about unspent MHSA balances. There is a, there seems to be an impression out there that we've squirreled away money or are hiding unspent funds that needs to be spent now, and I want to address that. We have plans for all of our unspent balance and anticipated revenue. These plans have been carefully thought through and designed by the people who have to implement programs for this county, people who understand our local needs, our systems, and how to actually implement programs that have been designed at the Capitol. These plans have been fully vetted through the community processes that I spoke of with people who live with and experience mental illness and homelessness and the people who serve them on a day-by-day basis. These plans are important, this process is important. These plans have been approved by this board, who ultimately bears the full responsibility for making sure that these programs operate well, the money is spent effectively, and that the system we have in place can be sustained over a long period of time. So I want to talk a little bit about the, spend some time talking about the Mental Health Services Act budget. I'd like to focus in, first of all, on the community services and supports area, and we've been using a five-year projection model on what our needs are going to be. And we start off with an unspent balance of 73 and a half million dollars. We are planning to commit these to a number of areas. First of all, being to refinance existing permanent supportive housing that we've already invested in. We have eight developments that we've invested in, housing more than 150 people who live with serious mental illness, who would otherwise be homeless. These investments also provide a foundation for other, for developers and providers to leverage other sources of funding that ultimately houses 600 people. Refinancing for two, for the first two, for two of these developments comes up in 2023. We have to, we have to start refinancing in 2023. Now, some would look at that and say, that's a long ways off, we've got money to spend now, let's do it in 2020, take care of 2023 when it comes. We have to give at least a two-year lead time because, as you all know, developers don't wait till the last minute in order to make their investments to be assured that the county's going to come across with money. Trust me, the money will be there, doesn't usually sell very well. So we have three years to be able to make, to make those commitments and assure them that the county's commitment is going to be ongoing. And it's the commitments we've made in the past that has made developers confident in, in continuing these programs and working with us to house those 600 individuals. And the six, there are six others that will then, refinancing will follow in very short order. And if I could briefly interrupt my PowerPoint and show you a overhead. This is additional information that a board member asked us to put together, and we didn't have time to, to make that available ahead of time. If we could zoom in, it's kind of small. But you can see that the, the other developments, we have to start making commitments soon after the 2023 date, all the way out to 2028, which again, is a significant period of time. And we could decide to spend the money and hope that money shows up when we get there to, to provide that. But I would remind the board, this is a $22 million commitment. We no longer have redevelopment money that can be a backstop for us. And frankly, in my experience, I don't bet on the come that the state's going to come across with money when the county will need it.
Paul, while you're on that, if I could, just since this was, information was just handed out, maybe other board members have questions, but I think just for the, those in the audience that may be viewing for the first time as well, help me understand then the chart that the developments that would require, first, the, the 22 million, is it inclusive of all of these that you've shown going out to some of those that were required refinancing in 2028?
Yes.
So what is the portion of that, to your point about doing things, giving clear signals to developers early on, for those that would hit the 2023, or I guess the last line there, the year commitment needing, 2021, 22, you've got three of those that are going to be in the nearer term, in that five-year window that you, you were speaking to. What is the amount of money that will be needed roughly for refinancing those particular developments?
I'm, I'm going to look over at Uma Zikowski, but my assumption is this is spread fairly evenly across the eight developments. Uma's giving me a nod.
So it's about two and a half million?
Roughly, roughly one quarter of it coming in 2023, so that would be five to six million dollars.
Okay, of the 22 million?
Yes.
It would be, will be immediately, I say immediately, at least as you projected.
Correct.
The rest of it will be needed in those periods of time, but would be a little further out.
Correct.
And I guess the other question I have, is this money one-time money or is it replenished with your annual funding? We do some set-asides. How is that $22 million accumulated? And then it has to be sustained, obviously, you do a refinancing portion where you commit to go into the project, right?
The $22 million that we'd be committing to it now is, is from our unspent balance. So in the future, you know, we'd spend that unspent balance down in part to, to maintain these commitments and sustain this program. Certainly, if the, if funding, ongoing funding, new funding comes in, you know, you can build up that unspent balance over time. But again, those are, those are ifs on how much additional revenue comes. I think you're all familiar with No Place Like Home, which is going to be funded in part by the state hanging on to MHSA growth money that the county would anticipate to provide future programs and to perhaps maintain those balances. So there, there's no guarantee that we're going to be able to replenish these funds and no guarantee that additional money's going to come in to cover these costs if we don't have the, the reserve.
Okay, well, there's very few guarantees of anything in this life, but I appreciate the prudent approach here. I guess I just wanted to be clear though, so then I want to restate it. So the portion that would be needed over the next five years is about one quarter? Is that what you said, one quarter of the funding?
That's, I'm going to ask Uma to come up here.
Got the six million out of the 22?
Yeah, six million out of 22. I just want to be sure if that's a six, yeah, is that six million come off the 22? Again, I, I know we're using general numbers.
I'd have to get back to you with precise numbers, but it depends on the size of each development. Some of the later developments are larger commitments.
Larger, right.
And some of the earlier ones. So if, if I can send that to you a little bit later, that'd be better so I can give you exact numbers. But the earlier ones, Ardenair, Y, and YMCA, Martin Luther King, are actually some of the smaller commitments, the other ones are the larger ones.
Yeah, because.
Depends on the size of the project, and we have to put that as the, the refinancing commitment.
Because there's 50 units reserved out of those first three, and then you're right, as you get further across the chart there, you see some, some numbers that are, you know, half that size of their, of their own one project. So, so it might be that you'd be a little less in the early years, but obviously, the full 22 million would be over the course of a 10, almost 11-year period of time would be needed. So there is some, some time in there, so, okay. Thanks. Thank you.
If I may add to the response supervisors, yes, only, only a portion will be needed to, to make these commitments over the course of the five years. But developers are going to be looking at what we do with regard to the money that we've identified as a set aside to help these program, refinance these programs in subsequent years. And again, the, the confidence in the county's support for these programs could be precarious if we say, we'll cover the first two and we'll, we'll wait for 24, 25, 26 and see if money comes in. They're, they're going to be looking at us. So I would encourage everyone to consider that. So I'm going to return to my PowerPoint if I could.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Before, before we leave the, this topic, is there anything in statute that restricts the use of particular funds for refinancing? In other words, are we restricted in terms of collaborating with any other local jurisdictions in terms of commingling general, general fund monies to do it?
No, there are no, those restrictions don't exist. So those, those options are available.
Okay. So the, the state doesn't really care about the color of money on this?
Say again?
The state doesn't care about the color of money on this?
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah.
Well, another category, we've put together a system of electronic health records using innovation funds from MHSA. We need to, we can no longer use those innovation funds to maintain it, they're critical to, to maintain these, to, to manage our health records in our system. We are looking for other funds to offset the need to use MHSA in the future, but right now, we think it's prudent in order to, to maintain that critical infrastructure, to set aside funds for that over the course of the next several years. The board is aware that we have a couple of important innovation programs that are, that are being ramped up and in the hopper, urgent care clinic and a crisis stabilization unit, which are going to be critical for, for, again, increasing capacity for services out in the community and diverting people away from emergency rooms and giving them the more appropriate places to, to receive services. And it's, it's important, and we're hopeful that we can sustain those programs using these funding sources. No Place Like Home, this money, as I mentioned, is funded with MHSA growth, and in order for the county to successfully apply for recouping that money to provide housing and develop, developing that infrastructure, we also have to make a commitment for over a 20-year period of time to provide the supportive services that are part of that program. Our estimate over 20 years is that's about a $36 million commitment. If we had, if the county had another source of reserves, I would be more comfortable recommending that, you know, maybe we can use those other sources of reserves to help pay for some of this, but we don't have any. Looking three to five years in, in the future, you know, people say, No Place Like Home is kind of going slow, it may not even happen that fast, why are you worried about it? It's a bold program, and sometimes implementation of bold programs prove more difficult than those who envision putting the program together and once it comes time to implement. But, but we have to submit a plan in the next couple of years, and that plan has to stay very, state very clearly how we're going to cover this commitment for 20 years for services. We have to be able to make that commitment then. And I don't recommend risking leaving you and the county in, in the situation where we can't compete for the No Place Like Home dollars because we've spent the reserves that we need when No Place Like Home does happen. Our analysis of our five-year budget also identifies that based on the state's three-year projections plus assuming 2% growth in MHSA revenues in years four and five, we're going to have a revenue gap of about five, five million dollars a year and 25 million over the course of five years. So even using the unspent balance, we're going to spend more in this plan money than we have coming in. We could look at the option, we, you know, if we, if we decide to blow off No Place Like Home and hope for some Monday morning miracle in a couple of years, we're still going to, we would still be $16 million short. If we decide to hope for the best and spend the set aside for the permanent supportive housing, the one thing that everyone agrees we need more than anything else, then we might have a few million dollars to provide extra services, but I would also remind you that this is a program that goes away in five years. There still needs, would need to be sustainability. That money will go away just when we need it for No Place Like Home and just when we need it to refinance these, these housing programs. So looking at the four MHSA components, we are looking at overall a $70 million shortfall. I need to point out that the table on page eight in the staff report did not total up some, some cross, some cross totals, and that number is actually 70.5 million, not the 23 that's in the board report, I apologize for that. I also point out that we do have a prudent reserve. Some people have said, well, why don't you just use that prudent reserve? It's about $19 million. And that, and that money is, there are a lot of restrictions on how you can use that, and it's primarily for emergency situations. Finally, I want to talk about Assembly Bill 114. Hermosillo Azavito sent the board a letter a couple of weeks ago regarding this new legislation that talks about reversion. I apologize that we didn't have time to address it in the staff report, but it focuses again on reversion or basically returning unspent MHSA funds to the, to the state if it's not spent within a certain period of time. And it would obviously have implications to this plan that we discussed today. I don't want to go over point by point, but we, we can provide some information to the board. There were some errors in that letter, but it's general information to the board, and Uma's going to have far more detailed knowledge of this than I, but basically, an overview is the, the reversion's not going to apply to all unspent funds, it'll apply to a subset of those funds. The county is, will be required to submit a plan by next summer, what they're going to do with these unspent funds, for, for unspent funds prior to, that the county collected prior to 1718.
We're not going to get. We're not going to give back to the state, that's not the plan.
And that is not the plan. We have to present a plan for how we're going to spend it by 2020, and I think we've laid out a plan of how we're going to spend that in that time period. We don't expect, based on what we know now, that there will be any reversion requirements for the community support funds that I've talked about today. We already have plans to expend those funds, and we're confident the state will accept that plan. So bottom line, we don't believe there's any reason to think that reversion will result in the county losing any of the funding that is unspent in the plan that we've laid out today. The city of Sacramento has, as part of its whole person care request, asked the board to modify the MHSA plan to use unspent funds to pay for more services to support their whole person care initiative now and basically figure out how to sustain these programs later. I would reiterate that staff opted not to apply for the whole person care because it didn't expand capacity and created financial risk. We already have plans in play that are going to increase capacity that could be accessed by whole person care, just like everybody else in the system. We're working on a number of critical areas, flexible supportive housing, full services, rehousing, shelter, sustaining, expanding our emergency shelter system, providing a winter shelter and sanctuary, providing transitional housing, maintaining community, making their community campus. At this point, we're not recommending that we change all of these very carefully thought-out and vetted strategies and, and risk the future of them for this program. However, the board does have that option. The board could explore changing the plan in certain areas that are allowable to serve whole person care participants outside of our current system or to expand services to support other initiatives for that matter. The process would require a thorough analysis on the impact of those who are currently served. There would have to be a community outreach and vetting process. Again, that is written into the MHSA law, and then we would bring forward recommendations to the board based on that for modifications of the plan. But again, we don't recommend this at this time because we may need to, to consider modifying, any modifications we might need to make, you know, may need to be part of a larger discussion of the entire system and some of our own initiatives. And with that, I'm open to questions, and again, I have staff with significant expertise in this area who can help.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. We have several supervisors. Just before I go to that, I want to announce once again that if folks wish to address the board on this item, please fill a speaker ID form. I know the mayor, certainly I've got you, I'm going to call on you first, but I just, anybody else, I don't have any other speaker forms. I know the mayor is here, so if there are others who want to address this, just so I can have an order by which to call folks, and I will call the mayor as soon as we get done with board questions here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
On that, on that point in terms of speakers, I'd respectfully ask that, I know that we have Toby Ewing, the executive director of the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission here. I think it's important, chatted with my colleague, the other half of the county's portion of the two-by-two supervisor Kennedy, I think it's important to have as quick and easy, if that's even possible, understanding of the facts before we engage in a dialogue and exchange today. And I think Mr. Ewing is probably best equipped to shed some light on perhaps where there, there may be some difference of opinion. But we're talking about, we're just talking about understanding the facts, understanding the, the environment of the Mental Health Services Act funding scheme and accounting. I think it's really important that we start from that basis. So I'd respectfully ask that we, after questions are asked of staff, that, that we invite Mr. Ewing to the podium first.
Okay. All right. And as long as folks are okay with that, then we would take questions for Mr. Lake and his, and county staff, and then invite Mr. Ewing, and then we'll invite speakers, and we'll invite Mayor Steinberg as being our first speaker. So, okay. With that then, Supervisor Kennedy, and then Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may have some of the same questions for following speakers, Mr. Lake, but I wanted to go over a couple of these things, and I think that, first of all, this is kind of a two-pronged report and process. One was, how are we going to follow up on the process we went through last month interfacing with the city to the degree that we can to provide the services that we're going to provide to people anyway, but how can we better work together? And I think that the recommendations that came out of that process, which are outlined almost verbatim in the report, are very good. The other aspect, of course, is this MHSA issue, particularly in light of the, of AB 114 and the reversion. And, you know, I understand that these funds are, it's very, very segmented, and even within each segment, there's segments that can be used at certain times and percentages and so forth, whether three years, five years beyond. So I'm going to ask just some, what your understanding or our, the county staff's understanding is of two of those in particular, and we've talked about this. One is, you said that the funds would be spent by 2020. Is that right? Let me, let me backtrack just a little bit for little semantics. When we say spent, are we considering allocated to be spent? You know, I mean, they're, they're actually not spent. Does that work within the law?
I'm not sure I'm following the question. I apologize.
Okay, okay. Let me go back then.
Well, you're asking about commitment, or is it committed versus actually being spent? They're still in the bank, whether you committed them or not.
Does that, I guess, does that satisfy the law?
I'm going to turn to Uma.
I think the, the idea is to have a plan submitted by 2018, July 2018, for the, the funds which are earmarked around the reversion rules and then actually spent by 2020. So we, we develop programs and put them in. Now, one of the things which is really important around those reversion dollars is that, as you indicated Supervisor Kennedy, they are segmented into different categories, and in the prevention and early intervention category, a high proportion of them have to be spent for the children and youth, the under 25. So when you look at these reversion dollars, you also have to go back and look and see which category they're in and how it, how it shifts the makeup of your plan so that you're complying with that under 25 population as well. So those are all the factors, but to answer your question, that is correct. A plan has to be submitted and, and approved for the, anything that, that was in the pre-2017 reversion category and spent, actually spent in program. So we would have to do a lot, get it out and spent into programming.
So how does that work now? Bump over to the No Place Like Home. How does that work? I mean, that's a 20-year-out program. How are we spending those within the realm of AB 114?
I, I think one way of thinking about it is money comes in, it's first money, the first money should be, the coming in needs to be the first out. So you know, you, you sort of are always spending your oldest money in your, in your bank account, so to speak. So the No Place Like Home will just be part of the revenues in the MHSA or in your other funding as they're coming in. We would be looking at our programming locally, our FSBs and others, and developing capacity in those programs to continuously serve them.
But that's money that's continuing to come in, so that's not unspent money?
No.
But we're talking about spending unspent money.
Right. This, this reversion, this AB 114 is very particularly both around the pre-2017, when there were years where there were categories where there was dollars that were not spent. In, in our county, we're quite confident there's no community service and supports, the intensive outpatient programs, the whatever it takes programs, that there's no money in that category. There is some money in the PEI category, and there is some money in the innovation category. The numbers on those are still being clarified and going back and forth with the state, but it's in those two categories where the, where the old money, where you need a plan for 2018 to, to spend down and to actually get it out by 2020. That's my understanding at the moment, and it's very new, this AB 114. So the state is still giving guidance to counties. The OACs also got a role in it, the Oversight and Accountability Commission. So we're working through all the numbers and trying to refine and get to the right number on those.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick follow-on? So what's your estimate of what that, you're refining that, so I just, what's the range of money, money that might fit that category as you've, as you least know it today?
Oh, Supervisor Natale, I really could not give you a number today.
Is that an order of magnitude?
We're really looking carefully at the numbers, the early numbers, the draft numbers, we thought were won, then we saw new numbers come out, so I feel very uncomfortable giving you a number today.
Okay. Is it safe to say, and you can say no if you don't, order magnitude of millions?
Yeah, it would be a million.
Okay, that's, I'm just getting some sense about it. So it's not a few hundred thousand dollars?
No, it's not a few hundred thousand. And it's, one of the things is that some of these monies that are in this pot are a result just for information purposes are there because they came in with a bump in the recessionary period, and it was very difficult to actually, they came as a one-time bump in the MHSA funding for certain categories, and the guidance was not very clear in the early years. So I think the work done this year by the Oversight and Accountability Commission and others has been very valuable to creating really clear parameters going forward. But the good thing is, we don't give money back if we can create our plan by 2018 and, and take care of that, that past problem.
Okay. Thanks, Uma. Okay. Other members of the board, any other questions at this juncture? Okay. If not, we can come back to certain of the questions. Let's do this. Thanks, Uma. Then we'll invite Mr. Ewing. If he's so inclined, please come forward and... Good morning. Thank you, W., for being here.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members. My name's Toby Ewing. I'm the executive director of the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission. We're, we're not the state agency that sort of oversees the spending. We're more akin to a state-level grand jury overseeing mental health, and so we advise the governor and legislature. We do have some regulatory roles. We do review and approve county spending on innovation plans, and, and so I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today. I'm thrilled that the board is taking so much interest in mental health. It's such an important topic, and it's, and it is part of the spirit of the act and that there be a, a robust community engagement. I'd like to just give you a broad brush and then respond to some things that I saw in your analysis that I would like to clarify. And, Mr. Chair, the, the state's figures and the amount of money that are subject to reversion is $11.4 million.
That's the state figure that you have for Sacramento County right now?
That's the draft that has been shared with the county, that the Department of Healthcare Services provided about two weeks ago on the amount of money from '08 through 2014 that, that was not spent within the three-year reversion timeframe. So the, to very specifically get to the issue of the AB 114 dollars, it's 11.4 for Sacramento County.
Okay.
Again, it's a draft figure.
Right.
The state is working.
Subject to negotiations, determinates, factors.
That's right. That's right. And, and the rules are sort of special to that 114, but let me step back a little bit. So Prop 63, passed by the voters in 2004, generates about $2 billion a year in revenues. That money goes to the counties. And the money is very flexible, tremendously flexible with, with some constraints. There's a, a couple of buckets for workforce and for technology and capital needs that are specific and they're smaller. The primary dollars are divided between three pots: services, prevention, early intervention, and innovation. The services are the traditional kinds of things that, that you do in mental health. The act was passed with recognition that counties were not spending or was the state making available money for prevention, early intervention. So it explicitly says 20% of your dollars really need to be invested in strategies to reduce needs, to intervene early, to do the things that we all want done for our family members, but that are very difficult to do with Medi-Cal and with other funds. And so this was the idea of incentivizing or providing seed money to push the mental health system to move towards a prevention strategy. We've historically been a fail, what we call a fail-first system, and, and the analysis that was done in, in the year 2000 was that we ration care only to the folks who are so ill that it's very difficult to serve them and very difficult to serve them in a cost-effective manner. So 20% of the funds must be dedicated to prevention and early intervention. And there's a requirement for all counties to set aside 5% of the funds for innovation. And so innovations are exactly what it sounds like. This is money to experiment, to try things, to invest in risk-taking, to see if you can improve your system in ways that you can't do with Medi-Cal and that you may not be willing to do with your general fund or your relinement dollars. And, and in the discussions in the drafting of the act, it was made explicit that all counties needed to innovate as a strategy to push this mental health system to move from a fail-first system where we ration care to a system that is a learning system. The, I'd say, primary constraint, other than that you can't co-mingle those funds across those buckets, is you have to spend the money within three years. The deal that the voters made when they agreed to impose a new tax for mental health was that you would use this money within three years or you will lose it. That's the biggest constraint that you've got as the board of supervisors. How you spend this money is really a decision that you make, and as other speakers have said, that there's a requirement for there to be a community consultation process. But the reversion component is a key component that we believe was foundational in terms of garnering public support because people passed this law recognizing all of the unmet needs in their communities. Last year, the commission started to look at the issue of reversion, in part because community members were concerned that counties were sitting on hundreds of millions of dollars and it wasn't being spent. As you heard in some of the memos, there were newspaper stories about hundred-million-dollar reserves, and the law is very clear that unless it's in your prudent reserve, which is designed for downturns in your economy, the prudent reserve is designed for the very things that your staff are suggesting. If you don't know if your revenues will be consistent with your needs in future years, you put it in the prudent reserve and you protect it against reversion. If it's not in your prudent reserve, under the law, you're not allowed to have it in a reserve. You're supposed to use it within three years or less. For a couple of exceptions, workforce, education, training, and some of the technology stuff, you have, you have 10 years. AB 114 also allows the clock to get reset for innovation funds when the commission approves an innovation plan. So if it takes you a year to plan, we approve it, you get three years after our approval, but that's a recent development. I, I want to clarify a couple of other things that I don't fully understand. In the presentation, there was discussion about the innovation plans that the commission has approved, that you're required to have a sustainable financing strategy. That's not accurate. Innovations are innovations. What we require is that you have a process to learn from your innovation and a process to then decide if the innovation was sufficiently successful that you would sustain it or decide not to continue. Right? So I think you had three categories of budget items in the presentation where there was, the county was planning for sustainability, and I, and I appreciate that.
Could we, could we put that chart back up? It was this slide here so that he can reference it so we can all kind of follow.
Are you talking to Metro Cable?
Yeah, yeah, Metro, yeah. Metro Cable could put the Mental Health Services Act budget, five-year? Or was it, was it a different one, Toby?
No, it's...
Okay.
It's in the, it's in the presentation.
So it's...
There was a discussion about your, the, the table showed a $27.5 million innovation investment and then tapping CSS in future years to sustain those.
Let's see if we can get, just get it up there. You, you want to put that one, is this the one here?
This is fine. So see, it says, "Sustain urgent care clinic beyond innovation funding and sustain the process, the proposed CSU beyond innovation." There's no requirement under our rules that you actually set aside funds to sustain an innovation because an innovation is an experiment, and we actually anticipate that you will pursue innovations that may not be successful. And so what we require actually is that you have the thought process to assess whether or not your experiment would be sustained. Right? So just to clarify, in terms of the 27.5, you're, the, the county has the option of making that as a policy decision, but I want to go back to the issue of reversion. When we undertook, when we took a look at all of the funds that counties were using and we, so that, under the law, counties are required to submit revenue expenditure reports within six months of the close of the fiscal year. The first thing we found is that counties were not submitting revenue expenditure reports as is required by the law. So we began to gather these reports and to encourage counties to submit these, and we identified about $140 million in unspent funds from '08 through 2014 that was four years old or older. The Department of Healthcare Services estimate is up to, let me see here, I've got the numbers, because they've looked at a later fiscal year, is up to over 250, 275 million dollars.
That's not Sacramento County, to just be clear. That's statewide.
That's year 11.4.
Okay.
Year 11.4 out of that, right? That doesn't include the latest fiscal year. For many years, the state was actually not monitoring whether or not counties were spending their unspent funds and was not implementing the reversion requirement. Those were the complaints that the commission received from members of the public, from providers, from, actually from some county... from some county behavioral health directors, because in their minds, they had $4 million sitting in an account that was old money, and if they spent it, and the state called them up and said, "You have to repay that $4 million," they had a $4 million shortfall. So their auditor controllers were requiring them to keep the money on the books, but the money was frozen. And so, we actually worked with the administration, with the legislature, to craft AB114 in a way that resets the clock and frees this money up, but with this message that says, "Moving forward, the Department of Healthcare Services will monitor annually the amount of funds that counties have not spent within the three-year timeframe," it's five years for small counties, but it's three years for Sacramento County, "and will report out whether or not the counties have returned those funds to the state." Working with the legislative analysts, it's very clear that the Department of Healthcare Services has the authority to require you to return any funds that you have not spent within the three-year period of reversion, unless you've shifted them into your prudent reserve or you've moved them into one of the other categories that allows them to be spent in a 10-year timeframe. So I think that there's been some confusion in the past, because the state was not enforcing the reversion requirement. But I would caution you that the presentation that I've seen today is, you're not allowed five years to spend MHSA funds. If you've amassed $100 million reserve over some timeframe, every dollar that's three, that's more than three years old, is subject to clawback by the state. And what the law says is that money shall be given to other counties for use. There's one exception. The one exception is at that point at which the commission determines that there are no more unmet needs. I don't think we're close to that. We're certainly not close to that in Sacramento County. So, I mean, my, again, I'm not the folks that come in and look at your books. Our office is creating the attention on the reality that the commitment to the voters with, that these dollars would be above and beyond the realignment money that you have, above and beyond your ability to draw down federal money, above and beyond your ability to use general fund dollars. This is sort of extra money. It's very fungible, tremendous discretion on how to use this, with one exception. If you don't use it, you'll lose it. Happy to answer any questions you might have about the figures or my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Ewing, for being here. You and Supervisor Kennedy. I had a chance to speak by phone yesterday, and you're willing to be here at our invitation, and we certainly appreciate you sharing what you just did. I think it helps us, as I mentioned earlier, try and drill down on just understanding the ground rules, if you will, or the facts associated with the do's and don'ts of Mental Health Services Act funds and the schedule, the timing, which is obviously critically important in terms of appropriation versus expenditure. I've got a couple of questions. The first is, there's been some respectful disagreement by some parties that have asked for some independent, objective analysis of kind of what we have to work with, namely, a memo dated September 29th by Hermosillo as a veto, which is a firm that the two-by-two, certainly with the mayor of Sacramento's input, agreed to have complete, and it's part of the information packet that was sent to you yesterday. Have you had a chance to take a look at that?
I did quickly look at that, yes.
And what's your, what's your assessment of the conclusions that are drawn in that memo?
Well, I think that, you know, the general tone of the memo is accurate, is that, you know, I'm not familiar with all the ins and outs of Sacramento County's process and the two-by-two and all the conversations that you've had. But I think this overall message that the intention of the Mental Health Services Act is to give you an additional influx of dollars for addressing immediate needs. And you bear a risk if you don't spend these dollars, right? And the risk, again, is that you will lose the money. There are some, there are some things that I don't fully understand, which is the extent that some of the dollars, you know, this notion of dedicating a surplus that you have amassed at the moment across a 20-year timeframe flies in the face of the very clear language of the law that says you've got three years to spend these dollars. So the notion that you can dedicate some excess, some surplus that you've accrued from prior years through to No Place Like Home is, I don't know, I don't want to use too strong of a word, you know, very questionable. So I think that the overall tone of the memo is accurate. You know, the other, the piece that I don't fully understand in the materials that I've seen in your briefing packet also is although there was a fairly detailed presentation on the MHSA dollars, you know, the county will receive allocations in an ongoing basis from MHSA as well as other sources, right? So I recognize that this county and every county will struggle to put together a financing strategy to sustain the services that go along with No Place Like Home, for example. But the intent is that the money you have coming in monthly from MHSA at that point in time...
Be used.
Is the money, pardon me?
Be used.
Is the money that you would use at that point in time. Again, the law is clear. You don't put this money, except for the prudent reserve, you don't put this money in a box under your mattress and then draw it out. You use it as it comes in. And where the prudent reserve comes in, if you're concerned about a future shortfall, that's why the Act allows you to safeguard those dollars. And it's not complicated how to access the prudent reserve. It's a calculation of your revenues have declined. So, the prudent reserve is your rainy day fund, specific to mental health, fairly unlimited in terms of how much money you can put in there, and fairly unlimited in what you can use it for.
Thank you for that explanation. My last question is fairly pointed, and that is, again, based on kind of what you know, and I know you've probably been drinking out of a fire hose over the last 18 hours or so, in terms of reading quickly the materials that were sent to you. Is there anything that you've heard in the presentation or that you've heard from, directly from the authors of the analysis, that would restrict this board's ability to exercise this discretion to reappropriate specifically monies, in this case, $22 million that are currently identified for refinancing permanent supportive housing, as well as a portion of the $36.8 million for No Place Like Home?
I'm, I don't know enough about your refinancing proposal to say much about that. There is a section of the law that says you can't sort of take money out of something that you've normally invested and replace it with MHSA funds. And so if there's a supplantation going on with the refinancing, that would raise a red flag for me. I'm not suggesting that's the case. But that would be my concern, just, you know, depending on what the traditional meaning of refinance is and how those funds were, you know, what funds you originally used. But I, but again, I don't know. I think the last thing I would share with you is that when we identified the, what we found to be $140 million, which is now up to about $275 million, the legislature had a choice to make, because the law says those funds shall be returned to the state for redistribution to other counties in future years. And we gave, we suggested a couple of options. And we suggested primarily that we reset the clock and let the counties keep the dollars, because it would be so complicated to figure out who owes whom over a 10-year period. It was clear in the discussions with the governor's office and the legislature that this was a one-time reset. So, I think, you know, my message would be, you have a tremendous amount of discretion on how to use these dollars. You have a tremendous amount of discretion in terms of how you allocate them within some broad constraints, like the requirement to spend a percentage on youth. But where you don't have discretion is to set them aside as a rainy day fund outside of your prudent reserve. And I would just suggest that those members of the legislature who were eagerly anticipating be able to capture these reverted dollars and reallocate them through state-directed initiatives, you know, stand ready to do that. We're under an audit. I'm under an audit. Healthcare Services is under an audit, and three counties are under an audit, because of the concern around reversion. And I think that attention will be sustained, particularly as the numbers that DHCS produces on unspent funds continue to climb.
Thank you.
Thanks. We may have another question. I just wanted to note, though, that, and I know I talked to the county executive last evening, that some of us did not get the September 29th memo, so it's not before us to really dissect. I know the two-by-two committee was there, and, you know, and Paul covered his last slide, obviously, explaining why, but that puts, some of us at a little bit of a disadvantage in this conversation, because we don't have Mr. Hermosillo's information available to us. And so, appreciate the exchange. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and for your benefit, I'm going to read something from that memo.
All right, good, for everybody's benefit.
So, we have here, and going back to No Place Like Home, if you will, what, I'll just quote from the memo that we did some question.
I'm sorry, Patrick, you're talking about the Hermosillo memo?
I'm talking about the memo that you may not have, and that's why I'm going to read this.
Oh, the invisible memo, okay.
Yes.
Three of us didn't get it.
And I did not realize that. I thought it was distributed.
Was it circulated this morning? I don't want to misstate it. I don't think that it was.
I don't believe it was.
So there are three of us that do not have that in front of us, so.
Okay, so bear with me. I'll do some reading. It says, basically, "The county indicates a commitment of $36.8 million for No Place Like Home treatment," which we've heard, "beginning in fiscal year 2122. On the annualized basis, this would mean $2.3 million of this money would be spent in the next five years, with the remainder of $34.5 million spent after five years." I understand that you don't, you haven't had an opportunity to dive into the details of all of our plans, but on the face of it, does that sound like a serious threat of reversion of those monies that are out there?
If I was sitting next to you as an advisor, I would be prepared to cover a shortfall when the state asks you to return that money. Yes?
Thank you.
The law very clearly says three years. And so if the county is anticipating, setting current dollars aside for any year after 2020, yes, you would anticipate that we will continue to monitor the fiscal reporting and the extent that the Department of Healthcare Services enforces the reversion rule. And it's very clear that the legislature will keep the pressure on us to be clear there. And so, absolutely, again, it is your discretion to decide how to spend these dollars, but at the risk that the state will require you to revert those dollars.
And it doesn't sound like we have a problem with how to spend these dollars. I mean, I think that what staff has recommended all along and what's in our plan is all good, and it's needed and necessary, and it will help people in our community. It's not a question of what, it's a question of when.
Of when, that's correct. And again, you will receive, the MHSA revenues are on a slow climb, and now there will be a downturn in the economy, no doubt, right? And so, you know, one of the questions I think you need to ask, as the board, is how did you amass such a significant surplus?
Because we didn't spend it.
Pardon me?
Because we didn't spend it.
Because you didn't spend it, that's right. And so, you know, do you have alignment between annual revenue and annual expenditure?
But it's...
And that's what's expected under the law.
We'll make comments later, but I mean, it's, we didn't spend it, but it doesn't sound like an oops moment.
No, it wasn't, yeah.
It sounds like a planning budgetary tools, the way we were looking at it.
Yeah, I was, that's how we amassed it.
Yeah.
But it wasn't because we, it was oops. I would agree with that. Okay, thank you. If I could just ask maybe Paul or Uma, because obviously, we've been operating under a premise, even pre-AB114, that we could extend these monies for 20 years or beyond, and I don't know what sort of a guidance we received, or lack of guidance we received from, again, not Mr. Ewing necessarily, but, so, we've been operating on a premise, though, that we could accumulate monies, have done that, obviously with a plan, that, you know, he was alluded here to, and certainly this board saw that plan some time ago. So, where, I guess, if you could help this board member understand, and maybe all of us, where's the disconnect here, again, as relates to, because this spending as it comes in, I get that. It may allow you to do a lot less than you would anticipate, even what's up here on the board now, because if you're going to contemplate, then for all the ups and downs that go through, annual amount of revenue that comes to the county, then it doesn't allow you to amass it in a way that, it might be prudent, in the sense that, not from the prudent reserve, prudent because it then allows you to go into a refinancing plan. Say we've got from year six to 20 to finance this. What I hear, again, to your point earlier about spending, you know, the oldest money, you know, first, but still, it sounds to me like there's some disconnect here. So Uma, maybe you can shed some light, at least from county's perspective, as to where we are, and for purposes of discussion, that we're going to get into in just a moment, relative to, you know, how we might allocate this differently.
So, this whole financing thing is very complicated to break down, but I would like to say that our permanent support, the refinancing on the permanent supportive housing, that's not about any type of supplantation. Those were MHSA-funded units, and we totally anticipated that there would be a refinancing required after a certain number of years for those units. So, what I can tell you is that the unspent is incoming revenue as well as your expenditures that are going on. So it's not that we're accumulating all these, this $98 million on and on. We're actually, within that $98 million, there is expenditures around the treatment programs that we have, that every year, you get the money, you spend. So we are on this sort of cycle of expending the oldest money first. So, I don't, I cannot tell you this moment right here that we have, I don't believe that we have any problem with the, either the supplantation or the sustainability. We are spending it in accordance with the requirements as we know them. However, we do know we have those reversion dollars that we were, we have not spent. We do know that, and we are looking into those numbers. So, I don't think, this is, this was an attempt to give you a projection, but for instance, the treatment portion of the No Place Like Home, that when we get there, is going to be part of the MHSA programs that are developed in the community. So they will be enhanced, and we will be, we will be delivering services through the full service partnerships that we have. So it's not like we're projecting imaginary, I mean, I'm trying to come up with a way of describing this, but we're looking into the future, but within the rules that exist around spending according to the plan.
Uma, let me ask you, though, to Supervisor Kennedy's question a moment ago, because I think, you know, at least in response, I heard from Mr. Ewing, that, you know, if that projects an expenditure of $2.3 million annually, and yet you're showing this block of 36.8 being roped off to your, so, how do we not get this three-year imposition and potentially jeopardize that money unless you put it in prudent reserve? But then again, I think there's certain rules around that, and I'm not an expert. In fact, I'm learning more this morning about this. But it's just, it's like, I guess I'd like to know that point, because I heard response from Mr. Ewing, and it sounded to me like that, you know, again, potentially, that could be at risk.
I realize that the OAC and others sit at 60,000 feet, you know, they're up here. I'm here in terms of the regular planning of how the monies come in and what we're spending. The, we are not, we were, we were looking at what would be, we're still in the No Place Like Home planning phase. We are actually going to, thinking that, depending on how we size that commitment, that is what we will have to spend in that, in that phase. So it will depend on the monies as they come in, that we have that flexibility and ability to spend them. So...
Let me, let me ask you one other question. I know that we've got some speakers here, but from all the times I've heard flexibility quoted here this morning, so I, again, we want to be prudent, we want to adhere to good planning processes and so forth, but if I, again, in response to Mr. Kennedy's question a moment ago, that there's a lot of moving parts. There's, you know, there's certainly a plan. There are, there is the threat of, or I guess the reality of reversion, if we, you know, don't, you know, spend it and spend it appropriately. But I guess I just want to understand, from your perspective, we do have flexibility. This morning, if we directed us to do something different, again, it might have to comport with a planning process, it'd have to be revisited, because I heard Paul's point. But we have tremendous flexibility in the way we expend these dollars, and so the request is going to come before us in a moment. That has been a part of the discussion with the city and county and two-by-two. We have the ability, it may not be your recommendation, but we have the ability to allocate those dollars to a process. Is that right? To complement the whole person, care?
You have flexibility to direct staff to redo the MHSA plan. That is correct. And we would go back and look at what things we would have to move around to do that, and what programs we would have to adjust. So that is correct.
Yeah, well, help me understand, though, because a lot of this is all projected. I mean, this, you know, I get the refinancing is existing housing. Okay, those are occupied units, but, you know, some of this is based upon what we think we want to do, what we know we want to do. And so, we're not going to displace anybody that's currently enrolled in a program or receiving services. There might be a contemplation of who we might serve. Is that correct?
You would, if you were to direct doing something different, we would... You would, if you were to direct doing something different, we would probably have to look at some of the funding, say, for instance, what you asked for earlier, Supervisor Natoli, on the financing for the later
Yes.
PSH units, and put those into play to grow a program, or design a program locally for the purposes that you're requesting. So, we would have to do the planning process to redo our current plan, based on the funding that we have in MHSA.
Okay.
I think Supervisor Natoli, we've never stated that there's not flexibility in this, and then the issue's always been with City of Sacramento is, there's a plan that we've adopted, and that might be the issue, how the term on the plan, but if we start taking dollars out of it, what staff's been very clear is that there will be displacement somewhere. For example, I think the urgent care clinic that Uma's working on, if we take funding away at this point, it could jeopardize down the road. I believe that's, it was never intent to say that you have no flexibility, that wasn't the case, that you have flexibility, but within the process and changes in the plan.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, I've got some other questions here.
Supervisor Natoli, may I just add, you have flexibility within certain programs, the urgent care is one of our innovations, so it depends, again, this is, again, you have to look at each component, so.
Okay, all right. We have two other members, I know that Mayor Steinberg is probably on the schedule here, so we'll get to you in just a moment, but Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Serna, and then we'll take the comments from the mayor, okay?
We'll just wait them out.
That's what he's worried about.
This actually is not about, to me, you know, the City of Sacramento, this portion of the discussion, this is, because I'll be honest with you, I'm on the mental health board, I, you know, do, AB 114 through this process became, you know, something I was aware of, and so, I mean, it's a game changer, potentially, and that's why I'm trying to grab my, get my arms around it, and realize that regardless of what the City of Sacramento's doing, that, you know, how our programs are going to be impacted, and what we can, cannot do, and that we fully understand that, and that's what I'm trying to do with these, this line of questioning. And going back to No Place Like Home, so, it's also a definition of what unspent funds are, in my mind, and that's always been so complicated in, you know, in MHSA. So, for the edification of all of us up here, as well as the public, right here, here's a sheet that says, you know, "No Place Like Home Treatment Commitment Beginning 2122, $36.8." That's not $36.8 that we have sitting, as Mr. Ewing said, somewhere on their mattress, right? So, that's part of the misconception, is, they're technically, for the layman, they're not unspent funds, because we haven't even received them yet, is that right?
That's right, we're doing projections into the future.
And that's, that's a huge distinction.
It really is.
Okay, good point. All right, Sir Serna, and then call Mayor Steinberg.
And just to dovetail off of Supervisor Kennedy's comments, I guess I take a little bit of issue with the statement made by our CEO just a minute ago about displacement, because I'm looking at No Place Like Home, the $36.8 that was just referenced, and we all know that that's a future program, has yet to be implemented, very complicated in its own right, and has recently hit some roadblocks. So, to suggest that this, that not allocating the $36.8 today, and identifying a yearly drawdown, and associating that with displacement today, I don't think that's accurate. So, I just want to be very clear, it's not something that we actually have in place today, whereas, opposed to the permanent supportive housing, absolutely, I get that, we get, we have people that are benefiting from permanent supportive housing, that have been funded historically by Prop 6 to 3 funds, that, we all understand, there's going to be a need for refinancing in the future, but when it comes to the No Place Like Home Treatment Commitment line item, that's a little different in terms of this concept of displacement, because I think the obvious question for everyone would be, okay, displacement, when, and by what means? It's not displacement necessarily today, who are you displacing?
Supervisor Serna, you're correct in that, this is, that, No Place Like Home is a future program, and I think the point still stands, that with the urgent care clinic, the crisis stabilization unit, and a number of our other programs, if we start rebudgeting at the board's direction, we'll do an analysis, and we'll identify whether or not, and I suspect we'll find some, that there will be some displacement in some programs, perhaps not with the No Place Like Home.
But with all due respect, I didn't just comment on those programs, I just selected No Place Like Home. I understand the others, I understand the capacity that exists today for the other programs, I understand that part, but the No Place Like Home part, I think, is fairly up for discussion.
Maybe displacement is not the right word, but that is part of our planning.
Understood.
That's, yeah, understood.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, we'll pause for at least a moment here, and hear from Mayor Steinberg, and then we can stick more board questions, I don't have other people signed up, so, again, if others want to address the board, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the time, and I do think that the order which you called witnesses was very appropriate, I think it was very, very helpful, because I think Toby Ewing laid it all out very, very clearly. I want to begin, first of all, by thanking you for your diligence and your time here, and by emphasizing that we, and I'm joined by my colleague, Councilmember Jay Shonier, City Manager Howard Chan, and our homeless services coordinator Emily Halken, that we're not here today exclusively to talk about a particular grant, I know this is about whole person care, but really, we're talking about how together, we combat the biggest crisis we currently face in our community, the growing homeless problem. We all want to solve it for humanitarian, public safety, and economic development reasons, and I think it's important to acknowledge that in a short time, over the last nine months, since I became mayor, we have separately and together made significant strides to demonstrate our commitment to act more aggressively. As you know, in March, we took joint action in that famous joint meeting, to redirect 1,755 discreet housing units, whether they be vouchers or public housing units, to try to solve this very problem. And the question that the city is asking, is how do we provide the services when we match our whole person care, together with those vouchers, to ensure that those 1,755, we think we can get up to at least 2,000 or more people, how to ensure that their homelessness ends? We have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to fundamentally merge our resources, that's what we're calling for, fundamentally merge our resources and strategies, and literally get thousands of people off the streets. So, this is not about whole person care, this is about taking the best of our resources, the best of your resources, and working together to get thousands of people off the street. I don't have to belabor why this is a current crisis. The point in time count went up 85%, I know this board has spent untold numbers of sessions and hours debating the health of the Sacramento American River Parkway, and associated issues, not a day goes by where I don't hear from a resident or a business leader telling me that they're ready to leave Sacramento, or pull out, because the situation's getting so bad. I don't think it's an overstatement to say that this single issue is the biggest threat to the economic renaissance we all desire for our city and our county. We all agree that no matter what we do on services, without permanent housing, we cannot make a long-term impact, and we took tangible action on that front in March, and we believe that if we work together on that front, including the triage and shelter issues, by the way, that we can create several thousand units of housing by working together. But the opposite is also true, housing without the services for the thousands who are sick, mentally and physically, will also not result in our streets being cleaner and better, and this problem being better. Now, we have whole person care, and there's been a lot of back and forth about who applied, why the county didn't apply, why the city applied, but all of that is looking backwards. Looking forwards, there are two key facts. Number one, it is a lot of money, and thus, a great opportunity now to intervene with thousands of homeless people. And secondly, it does provide the money for intensive outreach and case management, two key elements of getting to this population, because you can't house them and serve them if you don't intervene aggressively, especially with those who are treatment-resistant. And it is true, that whole person care does not fund housing, or mental health, or substance abuse services, which is why we need to be partners. And of course, that brings us to MHSA, which has been the bulk of today's discussion. And, you know, the irony of all the conversations isn't lost on me, I'm the author of the Act, I'm the author of the No Place Like Home Act, and, you know, I've put my heart and my mind into these sets of issues for most of my adult life, but that's here nor there, because I'm in a different role now as mayor of Sacramento. And so, you know, I was not going to go into the great detail about the numbers, but I wonder if we could get that slide up again, because the issues have been aired, and I won't belabor them too much, but the question is, how do you, as a board, the last chart, please, that's, thank you, how do we strike a correct balance between necessary reserves and the urgent current needs? How do you protect the future while saving lives and money, moving now? I acknowledge the work that the county has done with its four pillars and its programs, but I think we all have to be honest with each other, together, together, not just you, but together, it's not enough, we have not enough capacity, there are not enough resources to do the five elements, assertive outreach, case management, triage, shelter, permanent housing, and mental health and substance abuse services, we need more capacity across the board. And that's all, I know it's been frustrating at times for you, but that's essentially all I've been asking for as the mayor of this city for the past three months, which is to form a real partnership. Like you, I have led during the recession, I was the Senate leader during the $60 billion recession, I appreciate and respect the need for prudent reserves. But when you look at this chart here, and when you hear Toby Ewing's clear testimony, it's against the law to hold this amount of money. The No Place Like Home is a perfect example. Not only is the program not begun, it seeks to do the same thing that we're doing through whole person care on our housing voucher program. And it's unlawful, the staff recommendation is unlawful, in that it calls for 20 years' worth of funding? And so, when you subtract out the 2.3, as Supervisor Kennedy did, and you're left with $34 million, that can be put to use now. On the refinancing permanent supportive housing, I understand that that's an existing program, but the charts that we have here, and I know Ms. Zofcowski didn't have the exact number, but for the Ardenair project, the YWCA project, and the Martin Luther King Jr. Village project, the first three up to 2023, the amount needed for refinancing is $800,000 plus $600,000 plus $325,000. That's $1.75 million. Now, if that's incorrect, she said, she estimated a quarter, that would be about $1.4 million out of the 22. The remainder of that would be better spent now, on mental health services, to do what needs to be done. I want to make a very important point here, the city has never asked, and is not asking the county to write the city a check, we're not asking you to transfer money. All we're asking is for you to partner with us by expanding your capacity for what we call full-service partnerships. This is an important part of the Act, this is the whatever-it-takes approach to helping people with the most serious and persistent mental illnesses. And you may need a formal stakeholder process to, quote, redesign your plan, but it will not take a long stakeholder process, because merely what we are asking is for you to expand an existing program, an existing service that you have. And so, I'm asking today, specifically, that the county Board of Supervisors direct, I look at the numbers here, and I see 34 plus 20, I see $54 million, and that's my ask today, that the county set aside $54 million over the next three years, you can do it annually, to expand your full-service partnerships, and to functionally partner with the city to take our whole person care ground, and do what Jose Hermosillo and his fine work, Jerry Zavides' fine work, to get the staffs to work together, to have us do our outreach and case management, couple that with the expanded full-service partnerships, work together with SHRA and her other partners on the housing, and let us stand together three years from now, and even earlier than that, one year and two years from now, and celebrate together that we made a dramatic difference in beginning to solve a seemingly intractable problem. Our $64 million plus your $54 million, that doesn't even account for the value of the new vouchers, but just take those two numbers, 64 plus 54, $118.
$118 million.
$118 million, $118 million. This community has never made such a concerted effort to combat this crisis and this problem. We can get thousands of people off the streets if we put together, together, $118 million. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your questions today, and for your anticipated Appreciate it, thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor, thanks for being here. So, you heard the question I asked, my last question of Uma, I mean, and you seem to be of the understanding, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, please correct me, that it went down, the $36.8 million is money that's just sitting there, that we could reallocate to something else, but what I'm being told is that that's more of a projection of dollars that are coming in.
That's not the way that I understand it.
That was the way I understood the way that the question was answered.
That is real money.
Over five years, that would be real money, it's not.
But it's projected.
Yeah, projected over five years.
It's not sitting in the bank to be spent today.
It's not sitting in the bank, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm trying to get to here, is that, how much money do we have that we could reallocate to something else, or what's projected to be income in the future? And that's where, there's a disconnect somewhere.
Supervisor Kennedy, I would like to take that back to my staff, and really break that down, in terms of which piece is projected and which is there, I don't want to give you an answer, which would be, you know, detrimental to our effort to work together.
Okay, that's fair. I, but I want it.
No, but we'll get you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Because, yeah, it's important to the equation, whether you would boil it down simply or not, I mean, you need to know.
No, I can tell you why it exists, I can tell you why, because it's off the $98 million unspent balance. Remember, if you go back and look at this, where's Diane Van Gundy in here, please, who helped us with this work? You started with a $98 million unexpended balance, 2016-17, that's how this whole thing started. And then we asked you, how do you account for the $98 million? And you put forward a list of proposed expenditures, and $83 million of expenditures are intended for year six through 20, on top of the $19 million prudent reserve, on top of the $25 million, which is also a reserve, because it's for, it's for an expected revenue shortfall, that's also a reserve, that $25 million, that's on the chart there, too, Supervisor Natoli. But that's all off the $98 million. That's where you, we're not starting with a phantom number, the number's $98 million, that was the surplus beginning 2000, in fact, I think that was the surplus number, if I recall, as of the summer of 2017, because the OIC had done, had done Department of Healthcare Services in that update, so I think that's fair to say. As of the summer of 2017, you had a $98 million unexpended balance.
I just want to add, do you agree with that?
May I, no, I don't.
Okay, then, you need to explain, please.
So, our unspent is our incoming, as well as our expenditures, we have expenditures in our programs right now, there's something in the order of $45 million or so. What I'm hesitating to give you is, what are those earmarked, we've been doing all these growth expansions. We've been doing all these growth expansions with our different programs, our, on the children's side, on other, our FSP, our new TA FSP. So I want to give you an accurate number, but that 98 million includes revenue coming in and then our expenditures for the next year, which then brings that back down. So I, that's why I'm hesitating to, to give you a final number, because I know that this is a very important number in your mind and in our effort to collaborate.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman. This is the county's chart. It begins with what is described as a projected 1617 unspent balance is dated August the 16th of 2017.
What chart are you looking at?
I'm looking at.
Another thing we don't have?
Yeah, no, this was the.
We do have it?
Yeah, Mr. Hermosillo's second memo apparently is not included. Was apparently not included in the staff.
If I may, it's actually a county-generated table that UMA and her staff put together, and we've all been given it at one point or another.
But it's not in the staff report.
It's not in the staff report. It came to you a couple of months ago when we did our annual report back to you.
But it starts, but the county report that I have starts with 98.3.
Yeah, can we put it on objective?
Yes. Just put it face down. Face up, excuse me, face, I'm sorry, face up. Yep, sorry.
So you look at the, it's the, it's 98.3 million plus the 19.3 million prudent reserve, of which 73.5 is from community services and supports. And it includes, and this is, I consider this sort of a third reserve fund, it includes the updated five-year revenue gap, they're making an assumption, the staff, that somehow you're going to be $25 million short in revenue, even though MHSA revenue, because it's not indexed for inflation, goes up every year. So that's $25 million that you're essentially setting aside because you think the revenue may come in lower than anticipated. So you've got, you've got the 73 and a half, you've got the 25, and you've got the 19. And the No Place Like Home expenditure, of course, is off the, is off the 73 and a half.
Supervisor Natoli, I think, UMA, can you respond to that?
Yes, the, I'm sorry. The unspent balance in 1617, then we have to take into account the three, the one, the programs that we have in currently that would be funded through that. So that is where I am again saying, the 73, the unspent balance goes into the next year where you take what you're going to spend out of that to sustain the programs that exist.
No, but that's not listed as an expenditure. That's, I don't, nowhere is, nowhere is that written in any county document, including your public plan here. If that 73 and a half million was budgeted for some other purposes, you'd think it would be reflected in some form of a document here.
Can I just ask for clarification then, without knowing exactly? So what is the program obligation for this fiscal year, whether it's shown in documents, obviously shown in a county budget that we just adopted? So is that a $40 million piece of that? Is that a $20 million piece of it? What portion of our programming would fall under that 73.5 that would be an annual inflow and outflow?
Forty-five or something in that.
Okay, so it's, okay.
Roughly it's 45 million.
Where is it on the sheet?
It's not on the sheet.
It's in the, it's not on this sheet, but it is in the annual plan update where there is the expenditure column in there. It's not on this sheet, Mr. Mayor.
I think Supervisor Natoli and board members, we did, this is one sheet out of the plan. I think the question, fair question that the mayor is asking, if 73, how much of that is really ongoing at this point? How much is really, if you will, money that we are sitting in, as the other gentleman said, in a mattress? I think we can get you that answer.
I guess maybe I could put it a different way, Mr. Supervisor Chair, and then I'll leave. Which is, I don't think there's any dispute that as we sit here today, there's 98-plus million dollars sitting in the bank. That's true. That's the, that is the unexpended balance that's sitting there. Now, the question is, has that been promised for current expenditures? There's no evidence that in any of the documentation that the county staff has provided. But if so, what are the, what are the choices here as we are raising and have been raising for some time around these plans to hold this money from the 98.3 million dollar balance for 20 years' worth of program when the urgent need is right now?
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor Steinberg, for, you know, the presentations, the back and forth here.
Thank you.
And I do have, maybe before you leave, Supervisor Serna, you have a question?
Actually, you're welcome to stay at the podium, Mr. Mayor, but it's a question for UMA, based on that statement that the mayor just made, that there's 98 and change in the bank. I want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, that you're not prepared to let us know one way or another today, right now, whether or not that includes 36.8 million for No Place Like Home? Is that, is that where there's a difference of opinion here?
Yes. Yeah, I want to get back to you on the exact number on that unspent with the expenditures. Yes.
Supervisor Serna, I think based on this dialogue that we had, this is clearing some of the confusion, at least I've had. I think there's a couple of terms that are getting thrown around that we need to get to the bottom of it, is that if, if that's a projection versus what's really sitting in the bank, as the mayor said, it's 98.3, is that what's really in there? How much of that's really been committed? I mean, spent? How much is a future number? So the future number of 36 million has a different number in there. That's what we need to get back to you. I think UMA wants to look at it further. I want to give her the opportunity to look at it, because we've got a lot of information coming out today, so that's what I want to come back and report to you.
If I could just help on the point, it sounded to me just, UMA responding in a general response, but that potentially 45 million is the inflow-outflow for obligations throughout a current year, and that that would still, even using the math, assuming 98 was the number that we started with, would assume, you know, another 53, potentially.
Well, I just want to make sure, before we get into the numbers, I think we got a lot of good dialogue, a lot of facts gotten out, let us go back, work with UMA. If you have questions, of course, we know the mayor's number, we can ask him to. But I think I understand the nature of what the question is.
Well, and what it boils down to, the nature of the question certainly is to try to get some agreement on the numbers, but also then, you know, what is available to this, to this board for purposes of discussion as it relates to the request that's been made by the city? Obviously, it's not a brand-new request, but I think with the statements here, so I think.
Nuances, yes. Absolutely, that's part of that, isn't it?
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
I just, go back to an hour ago, and Mr. Lake's PowerPoint here describes the use of projected 1617 unspent balances, describes a 73 and a half million, which is the, so this is, I guess the question is to check, number one, is 98.3 million, 98-point-plus million dollars sitting in account in, in the bank? I think that's the first and fair question, and I think the answer will be yes. The other thing that, of course, isn't accounted for is the county's anticipated receipt of your 1718 Mental Health Services Act funds, which based upon the good economy and what's happened in prior years, remember, this fund has won $750 million a year statewide, it's not 2 billion. We didn't index it for inflation, the number's going up. And so, in terms of $25 million set aside in another reserve because of lower-than-anticipated revenue, I don't know. It's conservative. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Serna, do you have any? Okay, Supervisor Frost.
We've been talking a lot about the money, and I know we have some questions that we need to answer in relation to that, but I wanted to ask about that requirement that, you know, one of the reasons we did not opt to go with the whole person care was because we weren't necessarily sure that we could demonstrate the outcomes. Does the City of Sacramento have the ability to demonstrate outcomes as far as technology? And if we're investing in whole person care?
I'd invite Ms. Holcomb, she's with City of Sacramento, she's implementing the whole person care.
Hi.
Good afternoon, Emily.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Supervisor Frost. I believe, I'm Emily Holcomb, I'm the homeless coordinator with the City of Sacramento, I've been driving the whole person care project. I believe, I just want to make sure I understood your question is about technology and our capacity to track and report on outcomes via whole person care. One of the key components of whole person care and our requirements to the state is to be outcomes-oriented and report on a quarterly basis to the state a variety of outcomes, including housing outcomes. Luckily, one of the critical funding programs involved in whole person care is the ability to build that infrastructure. So we have a whole IT team that includes IT professionals, professionals who are helping us to develop the infrastructure. We can pay for that, which is a great opportunity for our community to really think outside the box. And we're hoping that while we have to support very specific things with whole person care, that we can use this one-time money to expand and create a data system that can support our broader community. So the short answer is yes, we will be tracking outcomes, we will be able to pay for and support the technology to do that as well.
Thank you. And then I also wanted to just go back to our plan, our initiatives that we approved through our budget process. A part of the reason we didn't go with the whole person care was that it didn't really give us what we found that we needed at the county level. And so, does the whole person care provide any, satisfy any of our goals relating to housing and delivering services? We had plenty, we knew who we had and how we needed to navigate them, but we didn't have the wraparound services and the support, which is what our initiatives provided. So is there anything about the whole person care that satisfies any part of our initiatives?
You know, in the grand scale of things, when we were analyzing whether we would apply for this, you know, there could have been some minimal benefit. But what we concluded was relative to everything that we're working on, that it wasn't worth chasing the money. Now, will the city be able to, to have an impact on homelessness with this program? Certainly, and we hope they do. But again, you know, that's great that they've stepped forward to do that, and we've got our, we've got our things that we're doing, and I think it all complements the system.
And I just wanted to then just make sure I understand what UMA said regarding the money flow. The money is being spent within three years, we're using it within three years. It's coming in, we're using it, it's going out, and we're, so we're looking at this from a, from a bird's eye view, but we don't have, we're not in danger of losing some of these funds. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, I'm glad you raised that point, because my understanding, but based on the conversation from Mr. Ewing is, you know, we're at risk of about 11 and a half, 11.4 million, I think was the number I heard for reversion. We're going to be able to spend 11.4 million in three years. We've got innovation programs that could be used to spend that. We'll have a plan, can't detail that out yet. State hasn't told us how they want us to present that plan, they haven't given us a whole lot of guidelines on doing that. We will present that plan to the board next year and to the state next year, but I don't know that, I have any doubt that this county will be able to make sure that we don't lose that 11.4 million that's at risk.
Am I sticking with our plan that took us a year and a half to put together, basically? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gill and Mr. Kennedy.
Supervisor Natoli, I, I think one of the things I wanted to clarify, I think, from what I'm hearing, we got into discussion where we think are projected, how we're going to spend the money out, and then we got into what the MHSA budget, inflows, ins and outs, what we do on an annual base. As you, as the board's deliberating this, I was just going to offer that if the board would like, we could do a workshop on MHSA budget, to Supervisor Kennedy's point, that this is not about just a request, there's a request component to it, but it is a fairly complicated budget with a lot of ins and outs. And if the board so desires, we can set up the workshop, walk you through the inflow-outflow, how do we go through the process, where do we spend the money, where do we think we need to go? So if that helps the board as you're weighing this request, we'll be more than happy to come back and do that.
Supervisor Kennedy's punched up, but I want to just state to your point that I think a workshop would be useful, but I do think that the question that's before us, that's on the table, it has been on the table, is that does the county choose to, something about want to or need to, is choose to for the reasons that we all know, as it relates to a lot of unmet needs in this community, be a financial partner with MHSA monies or any other dollars as regards to the whole person care and the city's initiative? And I think, you know, for us to have understanding that that would be very important and it's very relevant, and again, not to do it on the fly, and I appreciate, you know, the UMA and Paul Fielding questions here today, but that is the question, that has been the question. I think there's been a lot of good information, the two-by-two is, is proven to, I think, be helpful to surface some of these, but even just moments ago, we're still at odds. And so, I think it boils down to this question, we need to have the information, whatever we choose to do, that's clear, it's understandable, it may be disagreed upon because of either terminology and/or the way monies are either allocated and/or input or output of that, but I guess what I'm sensing, Mr. Gill, and I would just say this, and that we need to, as a board, whatever we do, come to a conclusion on this fairly shortly. And so, if you were anticipating a workshop sometime, you know, down the road, this would have to be very quickly. In fact, I would anticipate this had to be for October 31st, we have that discussion, workshop, we have a schedule for an action out of this board chooses, and tee it up and allow us to, I think, get some direction that would help our staff, city, and anybody else observing this to know where we're going to go with this.
Right, I mean, I wasn't contemplating three months out, I was thinking fairly fast. As you're deliberating, you have all the facts in front of you.
Sure. Okay, Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Frost.
Yeah, one thing I just want to, I want to point out, because I don't want it to be lost with all of this very complex conversation we're having with MHSA, which I agree for the need for a workshop sooner rather than later, so that everybody, for everybody in the community understands where we're at. I don't want to get lost, the staff's recommendation in the staff report today, which we've spent very little time talking about, because this whole thing came up when there was a clear disconnect between the city and the county, and how we were going to, short of implementing it ourselves and taking it, you know, as part of ours, the whole person care. And because historically, we've not worked with the city that way, and the city hasn't worked with the county that way, so it was a complete change in the dynamics of the relationship. And so, that's how we embarked upon this, and we had the facilitated discussions, and the recommendations that came up here may to some look watered down, but they're not. It's a cultural change, and I think it's a really important step in the right direction to avoiding a lot of these conversations in the future, but also for us as a county to serve the people that we're going to serve anyway, whether they're navigated to county programs through the city or elsewhere, you know, this is what we do, and it's our role and our responsibility to do that. I think that the four points that were made in the recommendation go a long way toward getting us there, if we have the commitment to actually follow through on them.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Kennedy. Okay, Supervisor Frost.
I also wanted to clarify, the City of Sacramento is asking us to partner. Is this a formal partnership relationship in relation to whole person care, and does it obligate the county in some way? Because I know there were some funding that was put up front that could potentially be lost if you did not deliver certain parameters of the program.
One of the things in the process that we embarked on with Mr. Hermosillo was very beneficial, is that we did get to the bottom of that. The partner is not that we're signing off on the whole person care, the partnership is more the services that we provide. So that's what we, the four points that we put up there that we will do these things, that's what came out of that agreement we have. The ask again today, which has been around in different shape, but took some shape today, is more of a monetary ask, will the county put more money into it? So we're not contemplating going in as being a signatory to the whole person care. Now, we will coordinate our services where need be, and the ask today is more of a monetary one, if that helps.
Or the ask today, to me, what I heard was the mayor asking us to reallocate, redirect from some of our programs into areas that would help their, help with the whole person care pilot. Is that correct? Is what I was hearing correct?
That's where, there's a little bit, not a little bit, there's a lot of debate, we spent time on it, is that, is that we have programs where we want to fund, so the question has become, are those money there committed, or they're not committed? But you're right, that's, you can get to that conclusion. But I think if the mayor was here not to speak on his behalf, he would say that that money's sitting in the bank, so I'm not asking you to reallocate.
And we're not sure it's sitting in the bank.
That's what we're going to come back to you in a full workshop, talk about the whole conversation about it.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Chenier, then Supervisor Serna.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jay Chenier. Just really quickly, Supervisor Frost, I think those are really good things. I just want to reiterate a couple of things that the mayor said, I know he had to go to a meeting. I don't, what we're asking here is for the county to expand current services that they're doing around mental health and substance abuse, to treat those who we would be navigating with or through, through whole person care. So, when we did the vouchers together, the 1,755 vouchers, that's going to create additional demand for service. We don't believe at this point that the county has the capacity under its current funding to treat those additional individuals. So, what we're asking you to do is take funds, not from programs that exist now, so the No Place Like Home particularly, and when you need the refinancing, that's a timing issue, but what we're asking is that you use those funds, some portion of those funds, to expand, again, current services to treat the individuals that we, together, I think, will be putting in housing through the 1,755 vouchers. I do want to point out, this $98 million is really throughout your documents and throughout the Hermosillo memo, again, and I'm sorry that some of you didn't get that second memo, I think it's really important, we're happy to have discussions. We, you know, and I'll speak for the mayor about, on this as well, we need to move on this. We have folks dying in the streets every day, we have a homeless population that continues to get worse. Certainly for the city, every meeting that we have is somewhat taken over by the homeless issue. I expect that that will start to happen here as well.
It's already happened.
It's already happened. This is something that we need to get after, and what we're asking, and Supervisor Kennedy is exactly right, this is a culture change. We certainly have not been in this business before, we have been slowly getting into it over the last four or five years. We think we can be more, much more successful working in partnership with the county. You do what you do well, we are bringing in other revenues and resources through whole person care. We don't care who gets credit for any of this, we need to get people off the streets into housing with services and solve the problem, or we will all be going down together.
And so, just to clarify, you're asking us to prioritize whole person care?
Not above, not above current programs that you're running.
Okay.
What we're asking for is funds that you currently have earmarked for your '16 through '20s through No Place Like Home, and some of the dollars that are refinancing that we don't believe will be needed within the next five years at least, and I don't think we have good statistics beyond that, that those monies be dedicated to, again, expanding the services that you currently provide in mental health and substance abuse to treat folks, the 2,000 folks who we think will be using these 1,755 vouchers over the next three years. So, we're not taking...
Assuming we have excess funds that are sitting there.
Assuming you have those, correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's really, really important at this point to reflect on how we want to frame the discussion moving forward. I could tell you that the two-by-two, Supervisor Kennedy, myself, the mayor, and Councilmember Chenier had a, I thought, what was probably one of the most productive phone conversations less than a week ago on the subject, and there was agreement about which line items of existing service were going to remain on the table, so to speak, and which were up for discussion, and you've heard it multiple times today, but it's the permanent supportive housing refinancing and No Place Like Home that I think should be the target subject of future conversation moving forward, whether at the staff level, quite frankly, at the board level, when we have a workshop, I think that ought to be, quite frankly, the focus, just so we don't get too far afield and start revisiting different positions that we all respect from past discussions, whether it be use of innovation funds or appropriating Mental Health Services Act funding for urgent care, that was a past conversation. We're in a place where we have functionally narrowed the conversation, I think in a very productive way, to those two line items. So, that's what I would respectfully ask everyone involved, including the city, to stay focused on.
Well, I think that's a good point, and just Supervisor Frost, and I would just think that we ought to look at a date, and I don't know, I think October 31st, I think we need to be back here quickly with that analysis, and then allow, you know, again, the work that's gone on, a lot of work's gone in this, we've devoted a lot of staff time as has the city and other consultants that have been employed in this process, and I think that narrows it down, that goes to the point that Mayor Steinberg and his comments, and certainly Councilmember Chenier alluded to as well. So, I think that that's where we need to bring the focus, and you know, if that flexibility is there, we can have the conversation about, you know, what's in the bank, what's anticipated, what's available, and how we might want to approach that in light of the requests that's before us, and I think we need to do it very quickly, and it needs to be an action item in addition to workshops.
Yeah, very quickly, I won't commit to the 31st, I think November 7th, but I will communicate back to you at a time and date specific when we're bringing this back, in month of November.
Okay. And I just, for those that may be tuning in, we only have two meetings in November, and they're the first week, November 7th and 8th, so it's going to be, to your point, it won't be any longer than three weeks from today.
Correct.
Can I ask you a point of clarification? So, is there anything that restricts there being a, you know, functional workshop where there's plenty of staff presentation about, answer some of the questions or many of the questions that were presented today, that comes with it, or a recommended action at the end of it? Can we have kind of a, you know, hybrid workshop slash action item? Because I, I mean, I'm very...
It needs to be an action, I agree.
Yeah, okay. Well, I just want to make sure, because we throw around the term workshop plenty around here, and we have workshops that are informational, so they're staff giving us a presentation or invited guests, with no recommended action at the end of that. And that's more, at least my experience, is that has been more often the case when we use the term workshop than what, I'm glad to hear you say, Mr. Chair, is your understanding of what we will consider as early as, I guess, November 7th now. Well, there'll be, there'll be a recommended action for whether or not we are willing, this board's willing to reappropriate funding that we actually have in our control, that we actually have in an account somewhere in response to the city's request.
Yeah. If, November 7th was just a little bit flexible, I got to make sure we can get everything lined up, but that's what, I took the intent, what you all were giving me direction on.
Right. You bring a recommendation, and whether we agree with it or not, we'll be able to deliberate it, hear from folks, and then make a determination at the end of the day, if that's what this board chooses, to direct, I guess, at that point in time, how we want to proceed forward then, but it'll be an action item, right?
Correct.
With the workshop portion being clarification of these issues that we heard today.
Correct. First, first part will be the workshop clarifying, so you have the facts.
Right.
If after that you want to take an action, you will have the ability to do that.
Okay. And so, clearly understood, you don't think it's going to be the 31st, it may not be the 7th, but it won't be any later than the 8th, because we won't be, there's no other meetings.
14th, we have a meeting.
14th, right? We have a meeting on the 14th just for one item?
Okay.
But I need to talk to Flo, how that will work.
All right. And we've held time on the 8th, though, correct?
On the 7th, we have...
We have, but we have a...
A Wednesday.
A Wednesday afternoon held on our calendars, at least I do on mine still.
We do.
If we need to.
It's...
Let us talk about that, see how, because we have gotten the 14th, it's almost, it holds all day. I just need to talk to her.
Okay, I just don't want to belabor this, so I think in light of...
I got it.
I think we're right there.
Yeah, right. Okay. Supervisor Frost, I'm sorry.
And also, I wanted to add that, you know, the initiatives that the county discussed over the past year were comprehensive, and we were all really excited, I was excited about them, and so, I'm wanting to help the City of Sacramento, but at the same time, I want to deliver the initiatives that we've already put in place without compromising those. So, that's where I'm coming from. I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I'm, we're not, I don't know how to narrow the discussion yet without getting answers to some of these questions that are still on the table.
Well, when they go through the budgeting, they can mark the items that would be reduced, right?
Correct.
I mean...
They're asking for expansion of services.
Right.
Which is not just, further clarification, it's just not a dollar amount now, not expansion of services on, that's what we need to start looking at, what...
What can we do?
Well, what can we do?
But as it relates to the initiatives, those were general funded, and now, so they anticipated some end of the line that you're going to have No Place Like Home, so you move people to permanent supportive housing, but the MHSA funding was not a significant portion of any of those initiatives, I just want to be clear about that, so I don't think it jeopardizes that, at least immediately, unless I'm wrong.
See, we're starting to get down into the whole workshop, because there is linkage that we have in those programs, and I just want to make sure that rather than just have a very cursory conversation, let's get in-depth with it so we can explain to you the programs that we had, with some of the clinics that are opening. I know that's not part of the, second part of the question, but the workshop, we want to show you how they all link and what the give and take is, and then we can get into the second portion, which is the money in mind for going to allocate, what can we do?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, one part of that analysis I could ask you would be that, then you talk, because they're talking about expanding these services to folks who might be eligible for vouchers and/or within the, you know, the service delivery system, or could be admitted to that system, recognizing that there's log jams there now. So, I think there needs to be some discussion about that, the benefit, because we just talked about dollars and what we want to do, what they want to do, you know, where would this dovetail in a way that it really benefits people so that we can, you know, to the need that was spoken to, what we all know exists out there, it's at our front door here, that how does, how does it help us if we were to reallocate dollars to do that? So, again, recognize our challenges with that, so. Okay. Anything else on this, Mr. Gill? Do you have clear understanding what the expectations are of the board, and...
Yes, very clear.
Okay. All right. Anything else? So, then, we did have the recommendations, I know Mr. Kennedy spoke to that a little while ago, did we want to offer any direction around the actual item itself?
No.
No? Okay. Because whether it was directed to keep working with the city and so forth, but we're going to do that, that's...
Going to continue doing it.
Okay. So, you don't, there's no action item, just that we would move this item to a hearing, workshop, and an action item in the next four weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I guess that's the direction it comes out of this. To be continued, more to come. Thank you all for being here, and we anticipate action in a short amount of time, so. Okay. I'm a clerk. Any other items for, that was the morning agenda?
That's it for the morning.
All right.
So, we do have a request that I need, that item, the 2:00 PM item, we'll come back at 2:00, there is a request to continue it for 30 days, and I did not have an opportunity to talk to Susan Peters.
The Arden Creek.
The Arden Creek.
I just got that handed to me.
Yeah, 49 and 50.
Correct. So, we will be asking for continuation, most likely till December 5th, but I need to work with Flo on the date, we'll come back at 2:00 PM to get you to it right.
You're going to have people probably en route now, so if we can get the word out, if that's the intent.
That's what we're working on.
I'm starting to get emails, I'm sure Supervisor Peters' office is, and others, from folks...
Yeah, but if we can move on from our meeting, they can contact people.
And that's why I want to make sure if anybody was watching, that that's the request, we are going to honor it, so we're going to start making all the communication out to folks.
Okay. All right. So, to be clear, if you're watching this, we have a request that will be honored to postpone the 2 o'clock items, 49 and 50, to a yet undetermined date within the next few weeks, so if you're en route...
No, no, December 5th.
We're looking at December 5th.
Oh, you said you weren't certain, so...
No, that's, but that's why I...
All right, so December 5th, so it continues to December 5th, and we'll try to get word out to the clerk's office during the next hour or so. We do have another 2 o'clock item that we rescheduled for the presentation, is that correct, though?
We do.
For the Gold Star Members, okay, so we'll, all right, we have closed session, as I understand it, so we will reschedule to a closed session, return here 2 o'clock for the afternoon agenda.